If you'd like, we're happy to do that. We do have a clock.
All right, let's get started. Calling the meeting to order, day two of our budget retreat.
Thank you.
Can I have roll call?
Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Asland?
Here.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember House? She noted that she was going to be muted today. She's kind of doing two different meetings. Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Oh, you missed me.
Councilmember Matthews, here.
He said here, Mr. Mayor.
Keep it in the rotation.
I guess this is hereby given. At this meeting, the council, this is a notice to the council and to the public that the council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for consultation with their attorneys for any item listed on today's agenda. Councilmember McCarthy, would you lead us in the cliche allegiance?
It's my pleasure. Please stand if you can. Cliche allegiance. We stand in America and to the republic for which it stands. Liberty, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Wait, I don't have anything in front of me. Don't ask.
Councilmember Sweetie? New petition statement?
That the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Okay. Councilmember Matthews, could you do the land acknowledgement?
The city of, the Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and regional stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants, forming them safer to indigenous peace. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Yeah. Hey, here we are, day two. Who is excited about the day?
It's Friday.
So please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Take it away.
Thank you. We're all impressed that you have the whole executive session.
Right.
Impressed and a little bit concerned. That's good. Thank you for getting us started this morning. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's Friday and it's not snowing. And I promised my friend and colleague Jeff that there would be no digs on the NBA this morning.
There was.
There was. Upset. Enough said. Yeah. Night was rather fascinating because a lot going on news-wise, you know, a lot. And then in the midst of it, NBA playoffs, draft, oh my gosh, yeah, I had it on a swivel. But good morning to you all. I will be brief. We don't have to do introductions again this morning. Kind of the same as yesterday. We're just picking up where we left off, if you will. Yesterday, we did get ahead of schedule, which was great. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, everybody. And we adjourned early. We may do that again today. We'll, we'll be nimble. We are, we are feeding people lunch.
We are feeding.
So you'll, you'll get lunch. But Mayor, Council, staff, we may, you know, we may compress if we're getting ahead of the schedule. We may compress the agenda in this morning and see what happens in the afternoon. If we spill over into the afternoon, that's just fine. But I think it's safe to say, you know, we'll get you out of here early today. So you can start on your weekend or finish up your business elsewhere, whatever's on tap. Front row observations from the discussion yesterday and frankly, all the discussions on budget proceeding yesterday, where we have been and how we got to where we are. And in no particular order. Our fiscal situation is sound. This is good. Something we should never take for granted. Things are good financially at Flagstaff. And that's, that's a natural or a compliment to everybody who is involved. Of course, there's quite a team involved in this, our finance team, the budget team, the council, everybody's involved. But the city remains in good financial position with good policies in place. Another takeaway, revenues, we're tightening the belt a bit because of what we're expecting to happen statewide. And that's not to say it's all, you know, because of the state, that's not it. But it does have impact and along with other things. So we're being fiscally conservative with our revenue projections, which is good. We remain challenged by our ability to recruit employees. We think sometimes we're seeing an uptick in that, but it's a slow one. And that is not a inequity for the city of Flagstaff. That's something that all the employers are, are dealing with. We chat, we meet with the Alliance Group. We meet with our colleagues, with the county and other governments, NAU, and just across the spectrum. Outside of Flagstaff statewide, throughout the country, I think employers are challenged right now with recruitment. We are no different. We also remain, I think, challenged with our vacancy rates. And that's a big issue for us that one ties, I think, to a number of things, cost of living in Flagstaff, a number of other factors. It remains an issue for us throughout the organization. We've given it a lot of attention in recent years, especially in those divisions where the vacancy rate has, has reached thresholds. We continue to do that. And we don't need to belabor. I think the takeaway is vacancy is still an issue. It's an interesting thing, you know, during budget season when everything is about spreadsheets and dollars and so forth. Here we are, you know, with positions that are budgeted that we're having a hard time filling. So vacancy, recruitment, I guess the two kind of go hand in hand. Those are issues for us. Other takeaways, capital improvements. Talk about that a lot. We had a retreat at the end of March. We touched on it again yesterday. And it's, it's going to be a, a theme that gets talked about a lot, more than a theme. It's going to be in our face, if you will, because a lot of construction happening. And it is happening as we speak. There's, there's a lot of things in the community going on. You know, the spruce wash improvements over on Grandview. Steve, I meant to ask you yesterday, are you seeing a lot of 180 construction? Is that happening right now?
Seeing a lot of pylons, yes. There's to be. I haven't visited the site yet.
Okay. Well, in those cases, construction is a good thing. Yeah, we can't wait for the finished product. A lot of transportation, construction, DCC is being constructed. But boy, as we look ahead, you know, this is a precursor to some very hefty projects. The Rio de Flag flood control project scheduled to break ground in spring of next year. The downtown mile. You know, council just this week had discussions about property acquisitions related to the lone tree overpass. There's a lot of things happening and a lot of things on the horizon. Water, wastewater, just big, big projects, very important to the community. So those are my front row takeaways. Behind it all, underlying it all, is a lot of work by you, the staff, preparing for these discussions, putting all the information together, talking about priority-based budgeting, talking about what's going on in your respective divisions, talking about, you know, housing and talking about climate and, and carbon neutrality. All of these things meld together during the budget season. That's what I find fascinating about the budget season is it isn't just spreadsheets and dollars. It's a snapshot of where we are. It's a look back as to, as to where we've been. And it is looking ahead as to where we're going. That is what the budget season brings to us. So I, I hope you would agree with me when I make the statement that these conversations in this room are critically important. It is our opportunity to really step back and look at forest through the trees and see where we are and where we're going. So with that, have I talked enough this morning? Can I turn it over? Yeah, who's our first? Jeff, I'll, I'll kick it off to you and then you can lead us through the agenda. Good morning, everybody again, and thank you for being here and let's get into this thing.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good evening.
Everybody today? Friday? Fantastic. I, I love how you came in this morning, Mayor Daggett, full of energy and, and life. So, and that, that got me thinking. So someone asked me to write, participate or contribute to a newsletter recently. And I could pick the subject. And I started thinking about what inspires me every day. And so I started this article. I won't read the whole thing to you. I won't bore you with that. But it's finding daily inspiration, you know, this, this journey into hope and sharing. So what I was hoping that we could do this morning that might be kind of fun was I want, is I want you to get in pairs. So whoever's closest to you, and if someone's left out, get in threes. We're just going to take a couple of minutes. And I want you to answer the question or this statement. I'm inspired by. So now here's your three categories. I'm inspired by, it could be a life experience. I'm inspired by my team because, or I'm inspired by this team because. So you all have your life experience, you have your individual teams, and then you have this team collectively. Pick one, and then I want you to share with each other over the next five minutes a point of inspiration from your life experience, your team, or this team. Clear up.
I asked.
Just another, just about another minute or so? A couple more seconds? All right, let's, let's go ahead and bring it back together. Go ahead and bring it back together. All right. So before we get into sharing, I want to just read this to you. So this finding daily inspiration, a journey of hope and sharing. So anyway, blah, blah, blah. So without getting into all of the weeds, I thought this was really interesting. Beyond, you, you know my background and where I get most of my inspiration from. So I want to start here because beyond the pages of scripture, I find inspiration in humanity itself. Every interaction, every conversation, and every encounter is an opportunity to glean wisdom, empathy, and insight from a diverse array of it, from the diverse array of individuals who cross my path. Whether it's the quiet courage of a friend facing adversity with unwavering resolve or infectious, or the infectious enthusiasm of a stranger pursuing their dreams with unbridled passion, I am constantly reminded of the indomitable spirit that resides within each one of us. So the point here is to intentionally look for inspiration all the time. So with that, you had a moment to share with one another. I'm not going to have you get up and form a circle. That was what my intent was initially. But you can remain where you are and kind of like we did yesterday, just starting at the back with your group. Tell me what you were inspired by. And if I could, I need one person, one person to volunteer to be a scribe. Person, one volunteer to be a scribe. Perfect. Well.
I'm inspired by.
Hey, I am inspired. Well, yes, over here. So, so watch, watch what happens here. As, as we go around the room, we dialogue, I want you to just capture one or two words, okay? That, that stick out, okay? And just go for it. Just write them on the board. Okay. Starting in the back with that group, the back table. Who would like to share? Yes, that's you. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else from that table want to share? No? Okay. Yes, no? Okay. All right. Where, where was that guy? All right. Next, next table in the back. That's awesome. Thank you. Hey. Thought you were, by not sitting down, you were going to get off the hook, right? Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you. Next table. Yep, that's you. I, I am. Very good. Very good. Good job. Good. Next group. We'll just keep it moving. Next group. Yes, absolutely. That's awesome. Thank you.
Team members that keep pushing us to be more involved in our community. They came up with the idea to drive free and purchase private shirts with the PD logo to support the community. I thought that was.
It was good. Deep is good.
We also talked about yesterday with the bad weather. I mean, they just got out of their job.
All three of us talked about being inspired by staff, you know, either at the division level, but I think also at the organizational level. Terms that were used was that staff lifts me up.
Lifts you up?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Hey, thank you for clarifying that.
And that makes me excited to go to work in the morning.
Good. Thank you.
I'm honoring April as my parents did a milestone of 70 years married. Not that I followed that. But people aren't even 70 years old and they were married for 70 years. So I think that's just something that inspired me. Didn't change my path, but it inspired me.
Very good.
The mayor inspired me when she came in, how she got it all. I was inspired. Thank you. But honestly, we talked a lot about this organization and how dedicated and how hard you all worked. Watching you all grow, city grow, council grow. It's just every day I wake up and I feel so lucky to be part of it and it inspires me all the time. So.
Real good. Thank you.
So I'm reading a book about Ireland right now. You probably picked on that yesterday.
Yes.
So Ireland, a country of very crude, uneducated people. But it's, the inspiration was that St. Patrick, he was just called Patrick in the day. This is around the year 500. He went from England to Ireland and he converted all these crude, uneducated people into spiritual, literate people. And they were actually instrumental part of the transition of Europe from the Dark Ages to the Renaissance. I'll leave it at that. It's a whole book.
Very good. Thank you. So we'll move on. So I asked you to capture words. Hold on, here, where? All right. In brief, okay, what have we captured here?
Individuals are inspired by others, right? A lot of this, it has to do with other people, the work that they do, the commitment that they make. That, that seems to be a big thing. Others do really good things that help us maybe want better. So that's what I take out of all.
Very good. Thank you. So we are inspired by each other. And we don't, inspiration really just happens. It doesn't, it's not something that you have to make happen. However, you have to be intentional in recognizing it. So I was inspired this morning. You guys might think this is funny, but it was Chief Musselman. Okay. So as I went out, we're in the hall here and I'm like, hey, chief, how you doing? I reached out to shake his hand and he had a coffee cup and he spilled his coffee. And would you know that this close to retirement, he is still so nimble on his feet that he didn't even get any on his shoes? What that inspired me was to continue to be nimble, okay? Regardless of the years as they come, we can still stay fluid and light on our feet. So with that, you mentioned nimble for this agenda today. We want to be that, but we do have a chance of getting out early. So we're going to get started. Our first group of presenters to talk about key community priorities, Chris, Shannon, Dan, Rebecca, and Paul.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. So yesterday I gave the overview on the quartiles of PBB to give us kind of the intro foundations of the discussion that we had, talking about how the quartiles, or each of their recommendations fit into the quartiles nicely. I'll be doing the same thing today except for the priorities and objectives of our PBB system. Yeah. Yeah, last year we went through and some amendments to our priorities and objectives. Priorities themselves stay largely the same. We updated our, our illustration here. So the colors are a little more vibrant and distinct from each other. There were a couple of the last year that fit together a little too easily and it was it's kind of in your mind, you go to the same place with them, but updated those. We changed just a few of these to match the grammar and whatnot, but they weren't substantive changes. So you know, for example, robust and resilient economy, stable, innovative infrastructure, inclusive and engaged community, and safe and healthy community, all now have and with no commas. There were some that had commas, some that didn't have commas, some that didn't have the and. We just standardized all those to make sure that they were consistent and clear. So the it was discernible. Bigger changes happens. Screen behind me is a little slow. There it goes. Some of the changes we made that were more substantive were to the objectives themselves. And we'll go through each of the seven priorities and we'll give you all the five or six objectives that fall underneath each one as we move through them one by one. I just wanted to highlight quickly that we, some of the changes we made were to include maintaining fiscal stability, adding inclusivity as part of our employer of choice items. We incorporated some newer plans we've worked on, like the 10-year housing plan, the alternative response model, the cares unit. We also wanted to add trauma-informed to one of our items there. Also added maintenance and management of infrastructure instead of just creating it. We incorporated the act of a multimodal transportation plan and updated some language to be consistent with our carbon neutrality plan as well. So those are all things that we some language to be consistent with our carbon neutrality plan as well. So those are all things that we've changed since the last iteration of this. Recommendations will fall into those newer priorities and objectives opposed to the older ones there. This is what it looks like if you go to our public facing PBB site. It shows a graph with each of the seven priorities and objectives. And how the different recommends or recommendations for the budget and previous budgets align with each of these. And I want to highlight some for you real quick. So the darker squares here, those are, that's funds going into quartile one programs. The lighter ones at the end, that's a quartile one program. And if you look at these, you're thinking, well, that adds up to 100%. That's because it doesn't. Every program was scored independently on each of these programs or this one. So you'll notice this little blue box right here does fit in this little section right here, which is why you have the all priorities. Kind of as an addition to those two. Programs were scored either on high performing governance or as a community program against all of these six programs. The ones that were scored against all of these six programs may have received different scores for different ones. So that's why livable community quartile one is way over here or for robust resilient economy is right here. Just more of the things that we are recommending funding scored in quartile one, little livable community than it did resilient economy. That makes sense? That's why they're different, but generally this, this graph shows you how we're investing in each of the seven priorities and objectives. Most of our programs are community programs that are scored against those bottom six and a smaller minority are in the high performing governance ones. Yes.
Right. Chris, thank you for that. This graphic is interesting. So correct me on this one if I misstate it, but when we look at the bottom, which is all priorities aggregated.
Yes.
And again, going from left to right, all the way to the left, the darker shade being quartile one.
Yes.
Everything to the right of that is two, three and four. And then going to your comments yesterday about quartiles.
Yes.
What we can see from this bottom of bar is when you look at quartile one and two, where you know, that certainly is the bulk of where the expenditures are. When you look at quartiles one, two and three is almost all of them. And then there's just small amount in quartile four. Am I?
Yeah. And I actually, I'm using the word quartile.
Okay.
That might not be the right way to use here because it's actually five, two, three, four and five. So things were scored on a scale of zero to four. So zero being not aligned at all, four being most aligned. So that's what this actually comes down to. Most aligns, not aligned at all. That's why there's five instead of four. And then we do an aggregate for the all priorities. So when we talk about the final score you get and what overall your quartile is, that's based off of this number where if this one breaks it out more as a cross tab of how it's scored specifically on that single metric. And then all of those go into the final product.
So the final product then indicates that we are aligned with the higher priorities.
Yes.
By and large. That's okay. Thank you.
All right. We're going to start with high performing governance and that is me, right? Or is that Shannon? That's you. Okay. Come on up if you like.
Mayor, members, good morning. Shannon Jones, Water Services. I will be sharing for the high performing governance against some of the initiatives within the budget context of which they support that priority based budgeting. Thin Management Services, again, initiative to split the finance section to focus more on both budget and finance with the addition of a budget director position. The team will focus on budget and priority based budgeting year round. In addition, within our engineering standards, the first, first time it's been updated since 2017, I believe council just went kind of through the first phase of approval at standard here recently. Next year, continuing on that, I'm building to, but also including the ability to to add in electronic plan review. Correcting the outdated information, making sure that's up to date and help align standards within the active transportation plan and sustainability goals. In addition, in our volunteer tourism sustainability, this year alone, 105 employees contributed 1,449 hours of service across 226 events. Ten. This year alone, 105 employees contributing 1,449 service hours across 226 events.
Oh, cool.
Still continuing with management services. We heard yesterday about the efforts and the energy and resources provided in our grants. And the work that's being done there is so continuing to invest in that grant training to make sure that not only we're successful in obtaining the grants, but that we remain compliant and that we do that with a high level of excellence. The human resources division looking to increase that funding to allow the human resources team members to attend additional trainings and obtain the needed certifications, their ability to expand their knowledge and to learn the current and best practices and how we can incorporate that into our organization. In addition, with tuition assistance programs, so financially supporting employees that wish to pursue that higher level of education. Looking to add in LinkedIn recruiter, which is a platform designed to assist recruiting recruiters and finding, connecting with and managing potential candidates for job openings. In addition, Spark Hire. This is an online video interviewing platform. Candidates will be able to record responses to interview questions and hiring managers and interview teams will be able to review them separately as time allows. It is anticipated that this will increase the speed and the efficiency and the overall interview process. Building on that with NeoGov Accusource integration. This integration will allow the candidate's information to automatically be pulled into Accusource for background check systems and eliminate the need for the recruiter to work in multiple portals to obtain that background check result. And the NeoGun onboard. Onboarding is a software solution designed to streamline the employee's onboarding process. It offers a comprehensive platform to help HR human resources department manage and automate various aspects of bringing new employees into the organization. More initiatives. Good Management Services, again, on the on base of how we manage documents, streamline signatures and getting those passed through the approval process. Looking at our live streaming, transitioning away from our existing online streaming platform, moving towards YouTube. This will not only increase the efficiency and save resources, but actually allow us to have more control over how our videos are displayed to the public. Telecom guide cards for the emergency medical dispatch. This includes both the implementation and the software. And then in year two, looking at the maintenance and the AG and the agency's accreditation. So currently there's a flip card system that is used by the emergency medical dispatch. So although these calls can be stressful depending on the nature of the call, sometimes the cards can be confusing depending on the situation. With the telecom, the software will integrate the medical questions into the call and actually giving given the operator the next appropriate question to facilitate that. And that's within our police division. And process development plans electronically. So within our city engineering continues to review plans in a timely and effective manner and looking to implement a new electronic plan review process. And in conclusion, moving to the courts, again, looking to upgrade the audio system in the courtrooms to better hear and capture the recording for individuals appearing before the court remotely. Sustainability of a platform to launch and FY25 with the goal of increasing communication and community volunteer engagement. And again, as we look to procure those volunteers and event management software to manage the hundreds of volunteers and events that occur across the city divisions. $50,000 is funded in this current fiscal year to procure the software platform. The centralized help for the community members and volunteer at the city. The platform will ensure clear and concise communication with the volunteers, allow tracking those hours and compliance. Again, sustainability collaborated with the city manager's office to develop and implement manage the city managers, employees, volunteer directive. That ultimately what's helped result in the 105 employees contributing those 1,449 hours across 226 events. I will turn that over to Chief Musselman.
Before you exit, Shannon, thank you for this. Underlying every one of these bullet points is a digital approach rather than a paper approach. This is just, I know we're talking about tools and efficiencies and so many things. But all of it is digital. And you know, I know we're way past that point of, of talking about these things, but it is remarkable to me to see all of these new very innovative tools being used. It hasn't always been easy. You know, my own experience with on base, for example, Stacy can attest to this is it took some effort, right? Still does.
Still does.
But once you get it dialed in, it's, you know, a few strokes of the keys on your computer and you're done looking and signing off and approving on a contract that might be 60 or 70 or 100 pages. So it is an efficiency and it's also entirely paperless.
Hopefully.
Yes, sir. You.
Good morning, Dan Musselman. I serve as your police chief and I'm here to talk about safe and healthy community. So some of our objectives under this priority include enhance community engagement and strengthen relationships with the community and public safety, supporting social services, community partners and housing opportunities. Providing alternate response model and serving mental health and behavioral health needs of our community. Providing public safety resources, staff and training. Promoting physical well being through recreation, parks, open space and transportation options. Then ensuring the built environment is safe. And some of the things we were able to do. We hired a, an additional police aide, provide better security at our library. With support for the property care standards ordinance with property abatement. Purchasing our graffiti busters, abatement supplies to paint over graffiti or remove it. Expediting the construction of flood mitigation projects related to spruce wash in the Schultz Creek at Highway 180. The 9.6 million that was sunk into the streets conversion project on East Butler Avenue. Which include, includes raised pedestrian and bicycle pathways. And then in the police department specifically, improving communication with victims of crime through our text notification, spider tech technology, which also allows the victim of crime to submit a survey afterwards. So we can constantly improve there. Any questions on that one? Continuing on, looking to pilot a downtown alleyway snow removal program. Investing in emergency management planning and response. So updating the airport emergency plan. And this year we'll conduct a full scale exercise at the airport. Developing a continuity of operations plan for the city and continuity of government plan. Implementing an emergency, an internal emergency alert system to send out notifications to city staff. And providing local national incident management system training to our people. Only when we open up an emergency operation system, it will run more fluidly. Then continuing planning efforts to ensure public safety at special events, whether it be parades, festivals, et cetera. Or In-N-Out Burger to make sure everyone gets their burgers. Continuing on, providing resources and training to respond to community needs. So this includes sustained funding to ensure minimum staffing level at the fire departments. Conducting fire paramedic training. A plan for firefighter cancer prevention. Sticking in fire department personnel professional development. Providing Billy, building safety professional memberships. Purchasing license and subscriptions to manage building codes. Implementing a real time crime alert system for law enforcement, including cameras. And installing some virtual training software for the. Also continue to provide resources and training to respond to community needs. This includes support for the police academy being housed at the Cookville Community College. This includes tuition and travel expenses when needed as well as per diem. Riding hotel vouchers for officers who have to work late or I-40 gets closed and they need to stay the night. Then water services replacement of equipment for community response. Continuing on investing, investing in a safe and healthy community. Providing blood, blood prevention assistance grants to purchase blood proofing materials. Contributing HEPA filters to at risk community members to help mitigate the risk during unhealthy air days. Building a accessible trail and install universal fitness equipment at Buffalo Park and on the Nate Avery Trail. Lowering crime rates and victimization rates by funding the care unit and flag staff shelter contract. With that, I will do my best to answer any of your questions or call on some friends. Have questions.
I'll see if I can spark some comments. On the care unit, a lot of discussion of late and chief at the CACC, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Recently you showed some or, or current numbers with respect to arrest records, tying them into demographics, which I thought was very interesting and very positive. About that program and you know, we're still in its infancy kind of sort of. But there's a lot to talk about. And while we were retreating yesterday, I know Joanne sent off to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. And Shannon worked with her on, on this. A Shannon actually did this particular proposal to do a presentation on this at the upcoming conference in August. All of your colleagues throughout the state. Elected officials primarily, but really managers and leaders on this topic. And Mayor, you were listed as a possible speaker on that panel if it gets approved along with, I think we'll need somebody. Shannon, remind me who's potentially on that panel, which you would be moderating if it gets approved. It's at the Biltmore, so I'm going to be there. Get that on the record.
I think today's being recorded, so I think. Mayor Daggett, or if she'd like to suggest someone else. I mean, I gave that option to all four of you. Either themselves or if they'd like to have somebody else they.
Thank you, Shannon. And thanks for putting that proposal together. And thank you, Joanne, for getting it out the door yesterday. Just a heads up. The liberty of obligating some of you to speak to this statewide. We feel this story rises to that level. It's just such a good thing to talk about and very innovative. So thanks, chief.
It was. And while I was at Flagstaff Shelter Services on Tuesday for, and we're sitting in our conference room and while we're sitting there, the care unit pulled up and dropped off a couple of people.
Really?
Really cool to see it in action. A case manager went out to engage them. So very, very good program and we're seeing great results from it. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it is cool. I remember two years ago in this room, talking about getting this program going, you know, funding was there and pieces were coming together. And here we are now talking about how successful it's going.
Please keep funding it. Please.
It's interesting that Flagstaff is a leader in a lot of areas, the cares unit, horse health, et cetera. Plant, et cetera. List goes on.
And this does go on. And on the subject of horse health, blood mitigation and catastrophe response, Joanne, that was. that was the second proposal that went out. You take credit for the other one.
Find out, I think. Second one, kind of the idea that is. Flagstaff.
Yeah, and you'll moderate that if it's successful? We obligated some folks on that one too, and they have no idea that we obligated them.
Great topic. I'll turn it over to Rebecca Sayers to talk about inclusivity.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to barge in here.
No, no.
Comments or questions? Good morning, everyone. Sorry, I'm a little bit late. I have been online this whole time. I wasn't able to hear most of what people said, but I see that it is written on the board here still. Jeff, the things that inspire me were that I was gonna say is family, nature, my solo through hike of the earth trail. It's the life's inspiration for me. And then I was also gonna mention the team Flagstaff, for sure. This is a highly functional organization and we all look good because of all of your great work and your superior intelligence. So appreciate that. Chief, I wanted to ask you, well, maybe this question is for Greg, but it might be inappropriate place for it. If you'd rather talk about it elsewhere or not at all, that's fine. We have a new police chief coming on board. I'm just curious about an update of when he's onboarding and how that's going and if he's, if he happens to be with us online or if he's following budget retreat this week, probably not, but I'm just curious. Context there.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Shannon to come on up and give you a summary. And we might segue right from that to a quick update on the HR director search. It ties into yesterday's discussion a little bit, if you mind.
So Sean Connolly knows that we are retreating because we've been communicating, communicating with him a lot. Chief Muselman has been coordinating Sean Connolly's background process. That should be done shortly. And then also, if we get through that process successfully, also his swearing in with council in June. So I appreciate that as I will actually be out of town when that occurs. So Sean is joining us June tenth. They'll have three weeks together. Chief, if I could invite you to talk about some of the great ideas that you had in his onboarding and getting him engaged with the community, I think that would be great.
Yeah, so when he comes on board, we're gonna have a couple of community events lined up, a couple of coffee with the cops. Obviously, we're gonna get him into the partnership meetings, whether that's the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, the Northern Arizona Interpolate Council, the Citizens Liaison Group, and others. And open invitation to you all, if you have a meeting that you think would be beneficial, please email me and let me know. Probably take the fire chief out for lunch because that's what you do when you're a police officer, you take the fire chief out. See what retirement looks like. And we have a lot of internal meetings with staff going on to bring them up to speed on just some of the great projects and programs that we have ongoing. And that's why we really want to overlap, just because we have a lot of stuff in the works. During his interview process, he talked about crisis workers that they have embedded within their dispatch center down Phoenix. And I'm happy to say that we are currently working on an MOU with our crisis folks up here to get it embedded in our dispatch center. So we've already stolen some of those ideas that he, I just wanna keep that momentum going because we've got a lot of, a lot of great things going. But hopefully we get his background wrapped up here in the next two weeks. His final day with Phoenix PD is May third. And then we've got a month to move. His biggest challenge was finding a place to live, which he did, which he did. So, yeah, so we're going forward. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And we're gonna talk about.
Chance yet publicly, I think, to acknowledge the new hire. To let you, Greg, I think you made an excellent choice.
The three of us.
Congratulations to the team for sure. I think you had embarrassment of riches in making your decision, for sure, but very excited to have Mr. Connolly come on board and.
Thank you, we all are. And when I say it's the three of us, I'm gonna expand. There were five panels and a community meet and greet. This was about as transparent and as inclusive of a vetting process as we could orchestrate. Thank you, Shannon. She oversaw that orchestration. So really good process and I would agree with your assessment, really good candidates, both internal and external. We're excited. Could we get off tangent and talk a little bit about HR Director because I know it's of interest?
So Human Resources and Risk Management Director, want to give a shout out to Rick's team, both Patrick Brown in procurement, as well as Christina Kinnear, who serves with the city attorney's office, have been really helpful in making sure that we could work with the Keller Group. Carrie with the Keller Group is a recruiter who brought us both Dietrich as well as Randy. She did an amazing job of making sure they were prepped about what was going on in our organization to help them plan out their first ninety days to six months. And so we're excited with their work. We've been able to secure Carrie's assistance again. She's brought us, I think, six candidates and four of them. We begin this work on the sixth, seventh and eighth. So hopefully we'll have some good results from those. She continues to look for additional candidates. We interview them. She makes them, makes us aware and we decide we want to meet and learn more about the individual. So it's moving along rather quickly and we're pretty pleased with the outcomes.
There will be a panel of leadership team, HR, and then our panel in our office. Do we do a meet and greet on this?
We may. We haven't decided that for sure yet.
Done that. Thank you, Shannon. Very important positions. One, we look forward to the new arrival and the other one, we're working hard to find that candidate. Make sure that that person is a very good fit as we. Sorry, Chief.
No, it's all right. Rebecca's the one waiting in the wings. Come on up.
Morning, everybody. Rebecca Sayers, I get to talk to you about inclusive and engaged community, but first, possibly at detriment to my future career here, at least while Greg is still here.
Leave the room.
Want to else pick up on him pointing out the digital trends that we're making, right? That we're moving towards technology. Yeah, he wrote his team's inspirations on a napkin.
It's a napkin. He used it, I didn't pull out new paper or anything. Come on, me.
Just found that interesting. I even said it to Joanne. I was like, did he write that?
Stacy told me to.
What Stacy tells us, so.
All right.
One of the best songs of the napkins.
I'm sure, yes, yes.
Napkin's a public record.
All right, well, before Mr. Kennedy starts kicking me off the stage, let's move into inclusive and engaged communities. So on your screen here are the objectives under this priority. So as the title suggests, it's about fostering community representation, advancing social equity and social justice, facilitating and fostering actively, in my mind, equity, diversity and inclusivity, enhancing the city's involvement in the community with education and regional partnerships, ensuring that city facilities, services and programs are accessible for all residents and promoting environmental justice and access to benefits. So let's get into the good stuff. So if you probably noticed, we're all presenting the, you know, different parts of us from the leadership team are presenting that these are citywide either initiatives moving forward or accomplishments recently. So on this one, the Sustainability Commission, and thank you, Nicole, for the copious notes. It's really helpful. The commission distributed seventy-five thousand in neighborhood sustainability grants was for thirteen projects focusing on a variety of initiatives, supporting multimodal transportation, waste reduction, empowering unsheltered community members and community resilience. And that was thirteen projects out of thirty-one applicants. They also partnered with Beautification Arts and Sciences to host a hybrid grant workshop. You may know that they both have these types of grants. And the climate team engaged with over four thousand community members in two thousand twenty-three, which is just a really impressive number. This one is exciting to me. PROS is embarking, again, we're bringing this one back, the West Side Park, finally. So infamous Amy Hagan, who you got to see yesterday, she has started.
Experience.
Yes, it is an experience. I am lucky enough that I get to experience. It's amazing. Talk about inspiration. She's definitely one of mine. But she has got a design consultant on board that also includes a public outreach component as a subcontractor. And just this week during your council meeting, she was meeting with neighborhoods at HOA because we still need to nail down that access to the city's parcel. So those conversations are going. Next steps will be start to get that access nailed down and then to start working with the neighborhoods where this park will be. This is in the Boulder Point. See what they want in park. And a really interesting terrain. So it's gonna be a great project, but that's moving forward. Of course, PROS, especially Open Space engages volunteers for cultural site monitoring, protection and invasive control, and also thousands of hours contributed to that over the last year. Moving on, economic vitality. Thank you, Heidi, for your notes. This, the My Local, the Flagstaff Local Campaign started a few years ago. There are seven pillars that include volunteering, mentoring, voting, their areas. Sometimes they have reinvigorated that campaign as something was coming up that needed a little bit more intention to try to get more people involved. This includes the volunteer program for flooding, Humane Society, and so on. We will, we PROS will continue to engage the community. We had a hugely successful social media campaign with Name That Plow. Keep up that creativity with our great marketing team, Tencent Marketing Team. And then hopefully you can kind of see in this picture, this is a picture of some of the team that I mentioned earlier inspires me every day. They did a great project this year that I wanted to highlight. They removed the wrought iron rail fencing around the Bushmaster Park Skate Park and installed it with two rail fence fencing that you can kind of see there on the left of the picture. It scorned that space. It's open, it's inclusive, it feels safer. Hopefully, police are noticing some differences. You can see from one side of the park through the other without having this most, to me, it felt like a jail-like experience. And it was a target for graffiti and stickers and all the other things that just make it look junky. This was a little bit of an experiment or a pilot project and it made such a difference that we're gonna look at continuing improvements like this as we have funding. And this is the incredible team that did it and they're just so happy. If I could blow up the picture, you can see their smiles. All right. This is the Stacy and Sarah slide. So the pandemic halted our visits with our indigenous partners, but recently they've been making efforts to re-institute those meetings and expand to other nations. So I'm sure you'll hear more about that. I personally had the privilege of sitting in on some conversations about an RFP that's been issued for the revamp at the city's website. This will be a huge undertaking, but funding has been allocated in this upcoming year. So stay tuned for that. We'll see what we can get. The community engagement program is also continuing to grow and expand and they've been expanding the reach on social media with new and frequent posting. And I've noticed it and I'm not even on social media, so it's great work. There's a new state lobbyist, as I'm sure you all know, that's brought in additional connections. And we have upcoming, anybody, did anybody know that we have an upcoming election?
It's here?
Friday never talks about it at all. We have an upcoming election in November to elect city council members and, oh yeah, maybe seek renewal of the BBB tax, which is extremely influenced our programming in PROS and others. Finally, and I promise I'm wrapping up, we are creating engagement opportunities. We're also embarking on, you know, the no-spall task of the updating the regional plan. A lot of work going on around that. City Engineering is hosting increased opportunities for the public related to their capital projects and they hosted a walking tour out in the Cheshire neighborhood for that new Fremont Boulevard Slow Streets project. And as you heard yesterday from Amy, we're working on the Indigenous Community Cultural Center. And then last but not least, we are excited to bring forward a new Fourth of July program and event this, this summer in downtown in partnership with our downtown businesses and the association. And stay tuned for that, but we're looking for 3D projection mapping on buildings.
What is that about?
I know, it's so exciting. There's no pictures.
Can we talk about that? Can you give the council a little thumbnail of what that might involve, how many nights and so forth?
You bet. So I think July fourth is on a Thursday. Okay, so we're looking at a Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night event. One reason for expanding it over three nights is just because you can, because Fourth of July is on Thursday, but also to help disperse the crowds because downtown, holding tens of thousands of people all at once for one event on the Fourth of July, makes me get really nervous and probably police and fire as well. So we're trying to spread this out, but it's also gonna be a great benefit because what we're looking to do is, I'm sure you guys have seen it in other communities, but it's 3D projection mapping on a building and it uses the architecture of the building to play with images and themes and there might be music or some sort of audio involved. We're still working out details. We have an RFP on the street right now. But for those vendors that provide this that we've been talking to, they are gonna work very closely with Heidi's team on the creative, so there's very Flagstaff focused and Flagstaff celebratory. And we're looking at the intersection of La Rue and Aspen. Hopefully Amy's on and she can like jump in and yell at me if I'm getting anything wrong. But that, we call that the X in the middle of downtown and that's the corner that we're really focusing on. You've got really, you've got four buildings on those corners that are really unique architecture, really focused on the style of downtown and provide frankly, some great canvas for this 3D architectural mapping.
I just wanted to remind the council that this entire Rebecca's talking about is on your working calendar for May twenty-first. So you'll get an entire presentation and all the other information.
Yeah, for the contract, yes. Thanks, Heidi.
Yeah, and can I add on, you know, council, there's so many stories underlying this, but we have gotten away from Fourth of July fireworks, you know? I mean, it was not that long ago where that was the tradition and one we're all quite familiar with, but these days it's, it's past us between the drought. Between the drought we are typically experiencing at this time of year and just all the impact and logistics. You know, there are better ways to celebrate the Fourth. And last year, through Amy's effort and that of her team, we partnered up with the county at Fort Tuthill and had a great laser show and very successful. And it was rather remarkable that it came together as quickly as it did. Big props to a team who did that. This, I think, is the next evolution, if you will, of what's coming of the Fourth of July celebration. We're all excited about it and it's gonna be downtown. I mentioned this, by the way, when I ducked out yesterday, it was because I was in a DVA board meeting and I mentioned this and Heidi, I volunteered you and myself to go to the DVA and talk about this. Maybe we'll include Amy and others, they're interested in it. But this will be huge, I think, so yeah, stay tuned for this, it's coming your way.
I've already made it scheduled for us to meet with some of the stakeholders.
Yeah, great, thank you so much. See how fast she is?
Yeah, she had probably already done it before I, you already, you already thought of it. All right, any other questions or conversations? I'll turn it over, I think, to La Rue.
Rebecca, Paul Moats, the engineer, pleased to be here talking about our sustainable and innovative infrastructure. We're doing some great things with the different departments here at Flagstaff and again with the help of the mayor and council. We are trying to deliver our planning services to our residents, a healthy and well-maintained infrastructure system. Utilizing the long-range plans to identify our future infrastructure needs. So when we're doing projects, we're looking at the carbon neutrality plan. We're looking at the active transportation master plan, trying to incorporate everything in there. We're doing projects, trying to provide and maintain our infrastructure for multi-modal transportation. PROS is gonna start really doing a lot more of the maintenance repairs to the foot trails. There's a lot of old asphalt that's cracking and separating. So they're gonna go in and do projects to identify the worst areas first, where there's high hazards or a lot of traffic, and then determine what is the right, the right material to use, whether that's a concrete or aggregate. So PROS is gonna be working on that here pretty quick. Again, we facilitate, develop and encourage our carbon neutrality energy opportunities. We work with sustainability, effectively, we're doing, we did our engineering, our first round of engineering updates, our standard updates, and our second round will be coming up shortly. And we're doing a lot of work with sustainability on looking at those. Let's see, supports also infrastructure needs, assist our organizations, provide services the city does not. Again, we're looking at different items that we can help promote, help organizations promote if we don't provide a service, so that's, that's been really helpful. Okay, so city, we've been working with Naresco to replace over one hundred and seventy water meters. Provides more accuracy to our meter and billing system, that's a plus. We're installing new security camera system at the East Warehouse. I have not been there, I'm told there's highly sensitive, expensive stuff stored there. So we wanna make sure that that's protected. Again, improve the modality and important commuter infrastructure with repair and replacement of the aging asphalt on the foot trails, we talked about that. Invest in the protection of information technology infrastructure upgrade. We're upgrading the fire alarm system and replacing the air conditioning unit at the conserv room. So gotta make those servers generate a lot of heat, gotta make sure that they're cooled and protected. And we're gonna be working to maintain and improve the public radio, safety radio system, system-wide.
Just a delay.
So there's some fun facts in this one, I learned a lot about different programs here. So expanding the residential food scraps drop-off to include an additional drop-off location and provide accessible residential composting service. So there is a, gonna be a drop-off added to the Flagstaff Family Food Center. And last year, twenty-six thousand five hundred pounds of food waste was diverted from our, through the system citywide, so that's a pretty big accomplishment. Provide free solar education and reduce solar installation costs with the program through Solar Co-op. So let's see, some other good fun facts here. Eighty-six households have signed up so far this year. It's a three-year program, we're in year three. First two years, there's been one hundred and seventeen residential installation, solar installations throughout Flagstaff. Approximately four point seven million in energy savings will be seen over a twenty, twenty-five year lifespan of those systems. Approximately thirteen thousand tons of CO2 emissions will be offset by that, by what's in that program so far. So that's a pretty good accomplishment. And then we're looking at developing a parking management program. That will help look at in the downtown areas, look at loading, unloading zones. Possibly setting up designated drop-off and pickup locations for taxis and ride shares. So make that more user-friendly, more efficient, less congestion. Just some other things, we talked about yesterday a little bit when I spoke about improving the multimodal infrastructure, sustainable modes of transportation. So we are, we're going after the eighteen million dollar raise grant for the Butler Four Street project. You know, we're doing the separated raised bike and pedestrian lanes. But if we get that grant, we'll also be able to look at doing the pedestrian underpass under Butler Four Street. So we put that in the grant application as well. And then yesterday, we applied, we talked about applying currently in the, for the Safe Streets for All Planning Grants. So currently in the, in the capital improvement plan for next year, we have two hundred and fifty thousand identified for a Vision Zero Plan. We have two hundred and fifty thousand budgeted for a transportation master plan. So when we were meeting with Metro Plan on different grants, they said they were actually contacted by the granting authority and said, hey, if you have anything to apply for, for these planning grants, we're not giving them out, we're not giving out enough of them. So we were taking that five hundred thousand dollars and we're going after an additional two point one, two point two million dollars. And we're also working with the county as well, you know, so the county, Metro Plan, the city. And the goal is to get, get us a good Vision Zero Master Plan that, that we can tie into our codes and be enforceable when development comes in. So if a developer comes in and let's just say there's a big intersection improvement, you know, we want them to do it. And then the transportation master plan will help. This is where we're getting in a little bit of a, kind of the details of our engineering standards. We wanted to look at home roadway cross-section in our engineering standard details. But we also have the Last Cat project that's kind of looking at that. We're gonna have a transportation master plan that's looking at that as well. So we're trying to figure out the best way to look at our cross-sections. So when we, when we do have that transportation master plan, there'll be a good plan that any developer can go to that says, you know, this road's an arterial minor, or you know, minor arterial or a collector or residential street. So then they'll know what they have to build it to. So that's gonna be really helpful for engineering and development. And recently, we started, you know, replacing more streetlight fixtures with dark sky compliant LED fixtures. This is a program that we, that we engineering does with Public Works. We actually procure the LED fixtures and we have to send them, I don't know if Sam knows where it is, is it Georgia? You know? Yeah, we send them actually to a testing facility to make sure they actually meet the strict standards. Then we get them back and then Public Works install them. So I got a picture of some installations going on. I think that wraps me up, if you have any questions.
Yes, Mayor? Yeah, is Jeff Baumann with us, you know, there somewhere? Maybe you can pitch it for him. Meanwhile, we've been in conversations with astronomers like Chris Leedenbeal, who's involved with LOL and also the US National Observatory. Just, they're interested in taking the infrastructure further for dark sky compliance. If you go back a slide, you know, I know they're following this, this funding. For example, one of the things they'd like to see is photocell installations and particularly in residential areas. It would enable part night street lighting rather than having the lights on, you know, from dusk till dawn as a default, which, which would help substantially keep the sky darker and also the neighborhood experience more fulfilling in terms of nice sky. Any updates on that? I think that's additional funding on top of, you know, just replacing the light bulbs.
I don't have any, unfortunately, I don't have any information right now, but I can talk with Jeff and I see Sam's coming up, he might have some info.
Question, if you notice that most streetlights in the community, they have that little, that looks like a beacon on top, that is. So most of the dusk till dawn are gonna be ABS lights and we don't, we just don't have them. We do have some that are within the network, but most of our lights are photocell driven, so they are activated dark enough and they shut off when it's dark. So I was having older file setup, you'll see a lot of that on the ABS structure.
Yeah, I think the idea is that not all streetlights would be on all night long. It would switch, there'd be a pattern that allows for some of them. You know, a lot of these neighborhoods are completely quiet at night and those lights just blast down on the, on the streets and the sidewalks for seven, eight hours with nobody. You have, you know, if you went back and forth between every other light throughout the night, you'd get the same cone lighting in the safety that's provided by that with half of the illumination. These are ideas that are, that are being pushed and I'm happy to champion them. I know those conversations are happening and Jeff is a part of that. I just wanted to voice it out loud here, the budget retreat, I think he's trying to follow that funding. And the more we could, you know, have that all a conversation and see it through would be great.
I'll follow up with Jeff.
Thank you.
Know what Vision Zero is, but I have a hunch that some people in this room don't know what it is, so maybe you can tell us. Yeah, so Vision Zero is a, is a plan to have zero, basically zero fatalities. So it does a combination of affected intersections separating bikes and pedestrians from vehicles, know, better signage, striping, educational programs. So there's, there's a movement to get the vision, you know, get the Vision Zero. And it's in our, you know, it's a council priority, it's in our capital improvement program. So we've just not had the staffing to like push it forward. So we're hoping with Metro Plan, we're in the process of making an offer to our second transportation planner. So that's exciting, so we're hoping to, you know, work with Metro Plan and our new transportation planner to get that moving forward.
All right, great job. A quick round for Paul, Rebecca, Dean. Take a ten-minute break right here, I'll come back at five after.
Five after.
Kick back off Heidi, Dan and Nicole, you're next up.
Get to talk about the break.
Break is a curry, you can tell. The lady or is it just? Try it again. Or? Doing that.
So much traditional technology.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor Vice Mayor Council members Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. I get to talk about robust resilient economy and as a reminder, a little bit about what that means to all of you and all the people that we work for. We're trying to support and strengthen a robust, diverse and sustainable economy. We're trying to maintain our business retention expansion. So basically our businesses. We're trying to enhance relationships between the community development, development community, the city and the residents. We are always trying to attract high wage jobs that require very low impact. And we're working to enhance workforce housing and development programs. And last but not least, we want to embrace and invest in responsible tourism opportunities. So sustainability and community investment have kind of partnered up for this green business bootcamp. I think it's already begun, but we're going to continue at point 25. And this is to help in collaboration with Local First Arizona. We are also going to support home energy efficiency and electrification and they've already done 127,250 rebates. And they are projecting to have 170,000 rebates and by the time we get to point 25, I believe. And in community development, they want to provide an efficient and timely building review. We know that you've heard a lot about that and inspection services. And then we of course want to improve our community visitor and business accessibility with our transportation multi model projects. And I think that has a lot to do with the fact that when you're talking about when we are putting in projects, you want us to be considered of our pedestrians or bicyclists, things like that. And Dan's here to talk to about that. No kidding. Moving on, in order to have a robust resilient economy, we have to care about our flex staff, Pulliam Airport. So we are now looking at additional revenue opportunities. The 31.54 acre parcel is going to be out on the streets. I am definitely working with Gantira and so are others at the team. They have decided to call that parcel, the Northern Arizona Techno Technology Park. And even though we know that it's for research and all of that, there is an ability that we could have hospitality, meaning a hotel, which would be a really good asset to an airport. We are seeking second airline. As you know, we've talked about that and we have some appointments that are coming up at Jump Start in May, which are going to be really terrific. And last but not least, we are also doing those additional campaigns. We talked about this on Tuesday with Route 66 Centennial. And then Lowell's Discovery Center is going to be a deal. Huge. So we are definitely partnering with everybody and continuing to talk about those. And then we want to continue to educate the benefits of the bed board and beverage tax. We had that again on Tuesday night. We are at about 12.1 at BBB Fund and the projections, I believe that Rick Tatter showed earlier in the retreat were about 12.9. So we see it growing. We also want to continue to do our business incentives. Again, not everybody knows that we have them, but they can go to chooseflexf.com and see those. We have four incentives. One is for workforce development, another for job creation, another one for business attraction and another one for business expansion. They all have different criteria and they all have different deadline dates where we look at applications. And we're not talking that there's a ton in those funds or anything, but it sometimes it's $5,000 here or $10,000 here is what a business needs to add a little bit more square footage or what have you to their business or in some aspects to do some workforce training, things like that.
Can you just expand on that a little bit on the workforce development? Is it paying for them to take those or?
We actually incentivize them to increase their workforce. So for instance, if you were, I'm going to give you an example, if you a business that came in and you said, we're going to bring 50 jobs by, you know, 2027, we'll incentivize them to get there. If they don't meet the 2027, they pay us back. But that very seldom happens. Most of them will not even fill out an application or participate in it if they don't feel like they're clearly going to make those marks. So we've had a little bit of that. We haven't had a ton in that specific incentive. But we've done better on the expansion ones where a business that's been here wanted to actually leave the they went through the incubator, business incubator program up at Nasa Moonshot. Then they went to the accelerator program. They graduated. We call them graduates. And then they go out into the community to build their business. We incentivize them to stay here instead of go somewhere else or take their business to a different city. And that's what that incentive, we've done more of. All the businesses. So it's a good program and each year we're hoping to add some funding to it. And we're almost branding could probably legitimize this. We're almost done paying off the debt service of the incubator and accelerator buildings. And once that's done, we'll have a little bit more money in the economic development fund to continue to help our businesses. And then last but not least, PROS is always helping to bring in sport related tournaments. And these draw hundreds and hundreds of people a year. And so we know when you come for a sporting event for the weekend, you're doing hotel rooms, you're buying food, you're getting gas, all of those create a huge economic impact for community. So we are going to continue to help bring those in and help make sure they have a great time and want to come back. I think that is all I have before I turn it over to Dan Fulck. Is there any other questions on this category? Thank you. Oh, wait, I just want to say one thing. Rebecca, just so you know, economic development, we think that lots of new business ideas are always started on jotting them down on a napkin.
Heidi.
Getting less close to dying now.
Morning, I'm Dan Fulck. I'm the Community Development Director and I'm really pleased to be here to talk about takes a second, there you liveable community. Yesterday Jeff had asked us at the beginning of the meeting, motto. And so the quote that came to mind for me yesterday was one I'd read in the past year, which was never look down on anybody unless you're helping them up. I thought that was very appropriate for what we do at the city. We're a service provider. We help a lot of people, kind of ties in with livable community. Does anyone know who that quote is attributed to? For help anyone or never?
Never help anyone unless you're
Down on somebody.
I have it on my script. Never look down on anybody unless you're helping them up. The Reverend Jesse Jackson. All right, with that, let's get into our content here. So livable community, the first item we have here, that's not what's on my slide. One too many.
No, that's the new one. There you go.
Okay, we'll start with this one. So the first one is to create a welcoming community through partnerships, resilient neighborhoods and civic engagement. This one really seems to encompass almost the entire organization, right? Very few of these things on this list are done by one division or one program. It's all about partnerships, working with our in our organization and out in the community. Providing amenities and activities that support a healthy lifestyle. I think we all first think of our wonderful PROS division, Parks and Recreation Programs, amenities and activities, the library. Sure economic vitality is involved somehow Heidi's team. Work with regional partners that include equitable and inclusive educational and cultural opportunities for all. Again, we offer these programs through our organization, again, thinking of the library, parks and recreation. Actively support attainable affordable housing through the city's tenure housing plan. Heard some of that yesterday, all the money that's been programmed to try to implement goals and policies of our housing plan. We're going to cover some more of that here in a couple of slides. Support diverse employment opportunities and high quality jobs. Again, our friends in Economic Vitality working full time on that. Achieve well maintained community through comprehensive and equitable code compliance and development. A lot of this is community development, working with our police on a number of code issues and then implementing our building codes, fire department. Pretty much everyone's involved in development review and the code, the application of our development codes. See if this. It's in a little different order. I'll just read them off of here. Continue implementation of the short term rental licensing program. That was something that was launched last year. This has been managed by management services. So in Rick's team. What I can tell, things are rather smooth. I've only had a few phone calls, a few emails about it, but folks are registering. We have a great software program that helps manage that. Identifying folks that are actually on the market that maybe don't have their license. Partner with the Indigenous Commission to bring forward opportunities to develop the Indigenous Community Cultural Center. You heard a lot about this yesterday from Amy and Rose. Exciting project. Offer community garden plots at Benito Hal Jensen and the South Side Community Gardens. We've engaged 150 gardeners and hosted 10 volunteer events and six workshops at the gardens in the past year. So very successful. That's in Nicole's program and sustainability. Engage volunteers for the Snow Hero Pilot Program. This is also a newer one. It's reported that 26 residents have requested assistance and were paired with one individual or group of snow heroes to clear ice and snow from sidewalks. 37 community members signed up to be snow heroes. During the 2324 winter season. So that's a great success to start a new program. Offer arts and science grants to nonprofits. Again, this is out of our Economic Vitality Division. Creative Flag Staff manages our arts and science program and has disseminated 40 grants to the arts and science sector. Offer numerous murals, art projects, traffic signal boxes and other beautification and action grants. Again, arts, beautification, arts and science, done numerous projects around the community. Examples are the downtown flowers program, which has been expanded. I know that's a favorite of Greg's. I've been in meetings where he has some good views on the downtown landscaping. It is the little things that make a place, a community, really. The airport fence project, which is a really cool narrative. There's a guide that goes with that. If you haven't walked that, the guide, you should do that. And then our wonderful ADA project at the library, the new entrance. I'll tell you, the utility boxes, I do love that. Every day I go by Fox Glen and I see the fox on the box and it always puts a smile on my face. Complete the main library window project. This is a huge one for facilities team and for the library. Excited that that's in the budget. Support attainable and affordable housing. So we've talked about a number of these things. Sarah touched on a lot of this yesterday. Read every bullet to you, but obviously we own and operate the Flagstaff Housing Authority. Direct assistance to 345 households. Also the voucher program. We have a little over 522 vouchers that again help that many households. This budget funds the incentive policy for affordable housing. Was the chat program, the EAH program, which again are housing programs to get folks into into the purchasing housing. We funded for land acquisition consultant for the rental assistance demonstration. This is to get our public housing onto a new gives an opportunity to redevelop our public housing or modern units, higher density. Light tech program, you've learned a lot about that and us having a local match and then branding, marketing and community education. So I went ahead and read every bullet.
Although I wasn't. Before you go on.
Yeah.
I heard you present to council recently, I think it was during your first quarter update. Here's on the the number of affordable units brought online last year, which met our quota. Can you, do you have that fresh in your head?
I, rough numbers, but yeah, Sarah's, if you want the exact numbers, I'm sure Sarah can come up and bring them. But in terms of the number of units that went through the development review process, we're going to, we're going to be built. Close to 800 number, or 800 number. So 8,000 over 10 years, think of 800 a year as our target. We were right in the 700s and close to 20% of those were affordable. So targeted for a specific AMI.
Right.
So great. Great, because I think our target is 10%. Plan.
Yeah.
See Sarah shaking her head, so I think I was roughly correct on those numbers.
Question, and I know there was a line item presented yesterday that may be this contribution to gap financing for light tech. Was that the number? It was 100 and something thousand? That was something else?
It's different, but I see Sarah making.
Um, Sarah, the answer is, answer's always in the rooms, so.
Yeah. Online.
So the discussion we had last year with boards was we have a line item, but it wasn't funded. Then we did special funding. Is that, is that falling into play in the budget this year to have some set money? So the developers know it's half a million or 100,000.
I think we had half a million on that particular fund, but can you elaborate?
I can, thank you, Mayor and Council, Sarah, General House Director. So ROARs received an allocation from the incentive policy for affordable housing. And that this year was funded at the amount of $500,000. The line item here, local government contribution is that first number you referenced that was 170-something thousand? I can look it up. That we're setting aside to be able to partner if light tech application through the state continues to require some type of local contribution. So those are, those are different pieces and also separate, of course, from the bond funds for, in.
So this gap financing is that 100 and something that we saw yesterday. And that line item that we had underfunded or not funded now has a half a million or half a million dollars.
That's just the incentive policy, is the council incentive policy. And then the other thing that Sarah just mentioned, and frankly, there's just a lot of buckets of funding available for affordable housing that kind of crosses the spectrum, y'all.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, the, what we call IPA, the incentive policy for affordable housing, that's huge, that amount of money that's been set aside this year. Because we have had years where we've not been able to fund projects and turn anyone away. That incentive policy covers different application fees, things associated with getting the project built. Any other questions on this slide, attainable and affordable housing? To achieve a well-maintained community. Our inter-division staff is our development review process for compliance with just a whole variety of things, not just the zoning code, but fire safety, public works, parks and recreation, engineering, of course. This has really been an effort, a multi-year effort. You may recall probably three, four years ago, we did a listening tour to our customers. And really Michelle McNulty, Dave Millis, our development engineer, Alexander Puccirelli have really led the effort to our IDS development review process more efficient. And so I've been really proud of what they've implemented. It's included training our staff. We've had a lot of new staff involved, again, across the organization in this process. What is the purpose of this process? Our goal is to help people be successful and get them through in a timely manner. Making it clear what's required and what is just something we'd kind of like to see. So things like that have really improved the process. So I've gotten positive feedback from some of our business owners who've gone through the process. Building Safety and Code Compliance Administration of adopted life safety municipal codes. Again, this is a huge responsibility of our building official and our safety team. You just had a round of zoning code amendments that Tiffany Antall brought through a couple of months ago. So we're working, we will continue to work to implement the tenure housing plan, the carbon neutrality plan. You had an update a few weeks ago on the code amendment project. So we're anxious to see what comes out of that. So you'll be seeing a lot of code amendments in the next year. Older point traffic calming measures, anticipated construction in May. This is one Jeff Bowman and his team have been working on for a number of years. You've gotten updates on that over the, over the last couple of years. A big, huge capital project, opening of estates, phase one and two. Infrastructure, roadway, utilities, some new bike ped facilities that have come out of that project. Switzer Canyon Foot Trail is one that Martin Anz has been working on for a long time. Anticipated construction in June. This one will connect eastern downtown area with Cherry, or the eastern downtown Cherry Hill area to Switzer Canyon area. The connectivity one. I think that might be it, yes. Questions on livable community? All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Are you going to take control? Yes.
Good morning, Mayor Vice Mayor, Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. For some reason you all keep inviting me back to present and I always start with a bad joke, so. Go. It's your fault, not mine. There's been so much conversation about cars. It's a car finance joke. Which brand of cars can you buy without going over budget?
Brand?
Brand of cars can you buy without going over budget?
It's not the answer, but I like it. That's our alternate response.
I'm going to give you 30 more seconds. I know I get too excited and I usually give the answer too soon. Anybody, anybody? Ford. So if you invite me back next year. Well, thank you. I hope yesterday went well. I listened remotely as I could, but I'm excited to be here this morning just to highlight the environmental stewardship work that has been underway at the city. And I've got a lot of great information. It's been hard to really keep it to a minimum and throughout all of the PBB objectives. But environmental stewardship specifically is tied as promoting, protecting and enhancing a healthy environment and its natural resources. Engaging with our community members through educational and volunteer opportunities. You've already heard about some of that. Implementing and enhancing sustainable building practices, waste diversion and energy programs, as well as multimodal transportation efforts. Encouraging private sector investment and environmental stewardship, as well as implementing, maintaining and advancing the carbon neutrality. And then strengthening Flagstaff's resilience to climate change impacts. So a lot of what you've already heard this morning really ties into a fair amount of this. We're going to highlight just a few extra things. Let me see. Did it go? It went. Oh, I'm going too far. I'm looking at that monitor back there. There it is. Hey, thank you. What would I do without you, Stacy? Um, Sustainability Purchasing and Legal are drafting a overarching sustainable procurement policy and sustainable procurement code to support environmental stewardship. You'll be seeing some talk about that next fiscal year. I do want to note, though, that procurement will be in front of the council at the end of May to discuss the divestment ideas that were essentially brought forward by the Council for Arizona through a petition a little over a year ago.
Twenty-two.
More than a year ago. We are working, procurement staff are working on developing, as well as please, developing and soliciting on-call contract for procuring electric vehicles. I know there's been a lot of discussion on how we procure, how quickly we can procure in that balance of our organizational needs and to maintain service levels. We're really excited to move forward with this as we think it will help streamline efforts and reduce some of those tensions we're feeling within the organization and in the community. We are working to promote the shift to electric micro-mobility with an e-bike and e-scooter community rebate program. Very excited about this. And we're also expanding our electric bike fleet for city organ, excuse me, city facilities. We have a pilot out and we are going to expand on that. And we've had a lot of great feedback from the facilities that do have electric bikes. And we're looking forward to promoting safety, if Maria's on the call, as well as use. We will be bringing on a part-time grant writer who will help the city procure federal and state funding opportunities. This will be a position that is shared across the organization, but really focusing on advancement of the carbon neutrality plans and grants associated with that. We know very much, though, that these federal grants are huge lifts. We just don't have the internal resources or capacity to do this work, but we do need to go after those funds. And then we are going to continue to increase the use of organic herbicides and fertilizers in our community, which we know is very important to a lot of our community members. I did it right. All right. We are going to continue to build our electric fleet and equipment, including the necessary charging infrastructure. Hopefully folks saw the new infrastructure that's going on here at Core Services. Oh, well, maybe at a break, we can take a.
Right out here?
Nice little walk out there and maybe Sam, if you don't mind, we can do a little tour at break. All right. We're really excited to, we broke ground, I think, two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago on the new charging station. I want to give a shout out to PROS. They continue to electrify fleet and small equipment. And we're focusing on a new charger at the park shop and the purchase of an electric Zamboni, which Rebecca, can we all get in line to have a ride on that thing? Yes. It's going to be really fantastic. And if you think about, it's the ice, how would, the ice smoother, I guess, ice maintenance machine.
And mowing the lawn, it mows the ice.
I know what it is. I just didn't know what you called it.
We're really excited about that specifically because that is a piece of equipment that operates numerous hours throughout the day and it's in an indoor setting. So there are, you know, we're really excited to shift to electric from an indoor air quality standpoint. In addition to the noise that a Zamboni adds to already loud facilities. So there's, there's a lot of PROS here, no pun intended.
Yeah, no pun intended.
I'm excited about the collaboration with. The tourism service days are above and beyond what sustainability does each year. And we help in sustainability support our tourism. And they get several tourism stakeholders, commissioners and staff out to participate in cleanups that are highly visible specifically around the downtown and near the airport. This is in partnership with sustainability to implement and encourage zero-waste events. We have a zero-waste guide that we will be providing to applicants to really help advance that. Some council members know that it is illegal in the state of Arizona to require recycling. So this is our, to help support that movement in a voluntary manner. And I do want to shout out that Discover Flagstaff will hold those two volunteer service days will be provide, information will be provided to the council, so you can join. All right. Really thrilled and a big shout out to Danae Pressler and Joe in facilities, as well as Joey in facilities, who have been good, important partners as we are wrapping up the implementation of phase one of the citywide energy and water conservation project. Thirty facilities will be weatherized. Over 5,000 interior lights will be upgraded. This was a heavy lift on permitting for the replacement of 600 exterior lights. So a big shout out to the folks in community development as we processed 100-plus permits. We also identified irrigation improvements across 16 city parks to include improvements in irrigation controls, adding flow sensors and master valve replacements. And then we ordered and have received 179 water meter encoder receiver transmitters, also known as, known as ERTs, this spring. And then we will be looking at existing water meters. They will be replaced and tested to evaluate water loss. And this will help inform us if we move into a second phase of the water conservation project. This will allow us to analyze potential savings across the organization and see if the numbers work to move into a phase two for updating water meters throughout the city. And a couple more things. We switched our electricity rate at Lake Mary Well to reduce electric utility rates. Just as an informational update, our electric utility will change our rates and meter numbers without us knowing. So every month we have to monitor any changes in our rates as well as our utility accounts. So it is a heavy lift and that is something that we keep a keen eye on, especially when those changes happen for rates in water services. And then finally, we are preparing for the installation of five new heat pumps to replace gas-fired units at Josie Montoya Communities.
Question on the electric utility rates. How I understand it, city government uses in the energy rate, we pay for clean energy rates. It's clean energy here, it's not available to us. And I see an increase in utility cost per budget. Is there any discussion in maybe just paying the local rates on utilities, on the electricity, since we are.
And that's so charged?
More and more charging stations and different things like that. Is there a discussion to maybe, I'll be so over generous on the clean energy that New Mexico is using on our behalf and go back to what our local rate?
Sure, so that, so this is the Green Power Partners Program that the former city council has agreed to participate in, which, if you will, is clean energy credits. And that surcharge is just under 1%. So we spend a little under $200,000 a year to meet the goals that were set in 2018 by the council to be 100% clean energy for the municipal organization. We felt that that was a much more cost-effective manner to bring in, at least getting closer to our goals versus the $20 million cost of developing our own renewables. We're always looking at those opportunities because those are long-term stability. At this point in time, there hasn't been any further discussion on that commitment. But it is, the lion's share is in water services because they are the largest user. We want to offset that. Some of the council may recall that we became customers of electricity that's produced out of Hoover Dam through the Western Area Power Administration in 2000. I'm going to geek out, so cut me off at any time. But in 2016, they opened up a new schedule of customers, Schedule D. And so it gave us the opportunity to apply. And we are in a 50-year contract to receive energy directly from Hoover, which bypasses APS and is distributed through the Arizona State Power Authority. We save on anywhere between $30,000 and $50,000 a year. And all that savings goes directly to water services. Recognizing that they are the, again, the lion's share of paying that 186,000 dollar surcharge for the entire organization. It helps to offset that, but we haven't revisited that conversation in front of council. Thank you for the question. And our last slide is that the city continues to support the mayor's monarch pledge. We are going into our fourth year, but this action, commitment helps take action to save the monarch butterfly. And it's really in for, focused on education and capacity building. We've, we center a lot of our work in this space on youth engagement through educational programs and local elementary schools. And we have a. programs in local elementary schools, and we have an incredible amount of participation at the elementary school level. And again, I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to PROS for all their support. We grow a lot of the pollinators in the greenhouse that Parks put together that's located just south of the Sustainability Office. And if you haven't been by the Sustainability Office recently, first of all, the prison fence is down, which is really nice to be able to look out my way.
There's a lot of prison.
Well, there was barbed wire on it. It was right out. But we have a beautiful mural of pollinators on our south wall and pollinator beds, raised beds as well. So if you're ever in the neighborhood, please stop by and take a look. It's a lovely mural that was funded by BPAC, and it's just really, again, supporting our commitment to educate on pollinators and their value. Our watershed cleanups will continue. I think everyone in this room is very familiar with how valuable those cleanups are, removing debris out of the channels. We had 98 volunteers recently providing 196 hours of service and removing over 150 cubic feet of debris just from the Rio de Flac. This is a lot, and we really need to rely on our community to help us. I know there was talk earlier about our new volunteer platform that we will be launching next fiscal year. This helps tie in to bring in more community members to participate in these important programs. Speaking of, we will continue with our cleanup efforts. We have over 550 volunteers contributing. They average more than 3,500 hours of service, removing litter and debris from our community. Just cannot do it without them. And we continue to collaborate with Stormwater and our community partners in these watershed cleanups and the other types of cleanups. And then I want to just mention that city engineering also continued working with the Army Corps to finalize design of the Rio de Flac Control Project, and then, of course, acquire that necessary property. So lots of stuff going on. Happy to answer any additional questions. Yeah.
Just, I think we would all prefer that our green energy investments stay in the state of Arizona as opposed to benefit a neighboring state. Best thing is doing what we're doing, and meanwhile, it's also important that we're advocating for that green world energy transformation here in the state, which is why, you know, we visited the Arizona Corporation Commission last time we were doing state lobbying, and we have lots of other opportunities to keep pushing on that. It would be much better for, you know, the grid is all just a grid, so it's, it's all beneficial at some level, but we'd like to see those dollars stay here for sure.
Thank you for that point. I, we are constantly keeping an eye on opportunities, funding opportunities. In the most ideal of settings, we would have our own large-scale utility scale renewable energy development. However, I, and I, not to speak for you, Greg, but I remember when we first started talking about this opportunity, looking at this as a step in this greater trajectory towards achieving that more localized goal. I am thrilled to share that we did partner with the state of Arizona to apply for the EPA Solar For All Grant we did here earlier this week. That Arizona was awarded 126 million, not the full grant. That's going to focus on residential solar for community members. So there's gonna be a lot more to come there. There's a lot of work that has to be done even after an award of a grant to finalize this goal, and we will continue to keep the council apprised. But it's gonna be a collective effort, but we will constantly be, we, excuse me, we are constantly looking at more localized opportunities.
It's a little bit off the topic of renewable, but in the arena of carbon removal, can you talk about the Four Corners Coalition and the local aspect of that coalition that's helping us?
Absolutely.
If I could, also, Councilmember House has a question.
She can go first.
However, this fits in.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember House, do you want to go ahead and go?
Nicole, if you want to answer Greg's question now, you can go after. That's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember House. Some of the council may recall that Flagstaff has been participating in a lead creator of what's called the Four Corners Carbon Coalition, and this was a, really a partnership that developed with Boulder County, Colorado, as both agencies have commitments to carbon neutrality and recognize that carbon sequestration is a key tool in achieving those carbon neutrality goals. Boulder County and Flagstaff utilized old money together and was able to raise some private capital. We also invited in Salt Lake City and Santa Fe, New Mexico to join our coalition, and we went through a solicitation process that was managed by a nonprofit agency and awarded funding to help the conversion of businesses to focus on carbon removal. Our first year focused on the concrete sector. Blocklight, local Blocklight, was actually the recipient of the top prize last year to store carbon in our cinderbox here locally. And their goal is to, by the fourth quarter of this year, calendar year, to essentially have all of their cinderbox storing carbon. And that is a tremendous local resource, but it's also fantastic for the state of Arizona, which has a strong concrete industry to see this leading edge in transition. And if you monitor this space, the concrete sector is quickly looking on shifting into the space of carbon sequestration. We are currently in our second round of awarding funds. We just found out this morning that we have some more private money that came in, and we'll be announcing the winners of the new round of funding, which is focused more in the biomass or land application of carbon sequestration. And be happy to just do an informal update to the council on just the vastness of carbon sequestration, because there are lots of different types, and I believe you all will be continuing to hear about this growing field and all the technologies around it. The good news is, we have incredible resources in Arizona. ASU is one of the leading researchers in direct air capture, and then there is tremendous, fascinating work happening at NAU on carbon sequestration. And one more thing, if we get the EPA grant that we just applied for, we have some research involved in that grant that would focus on essentially wood vaulting, which is when wood is actually vaulted in the ground as carbon storage, and NAU would be leading that research. So lots of fun stuff in that space. Councilmember House, I think that's all I have to say.
Councilmember House?
Yeah. Thank you, Nicole. Can you tell us more about the plans for expanding the e-bike and e-scooter rebate program?
Absolutely. We have been working over this year with legal and our Equity Advisory Committee to discuss the best application of funding to get distributed into the community. Our focus wants to be, or is, our commitment is to focus on low-income members of our community getting first access to electric bikes as a mechanism for transit as well as exercise and fun, recreation. So we will be, we're kind of tightening up the buttons, if you will, on the legal element, the application process, and would be happy to bring to council our draft concept here in the coming months. We haven't finalized everything, Councilmember House, but we are, we are working on it. We do have some, some elements to finalize, but it should be ready to go here this summer.
Great, thank you.
I know several years ago, council, but there was an effort, I think out by Twin Arrows with the Hopi Tribe to do some type of solar, bring that electricity in, that whatever reason fell through, but we have a huge wind farm out in Babbitt Ranch. Do we get any part of that direct, or does that go to APS? And is there any opportunity for us to draw on that since it's right in our backyard?
Local. I will, thank you for that question, and by no means am I an expert on the electric grid. The way that I like to explain the grid is it is a giant pot of ingredients. And so similar to us buying those clean energy credits, we can't, those clean energy credits just go onto the grid. They aren't necessarily, we can't say, we want this energy from New Mexico to come straight to Flagstaff. It's just kind of, we get a scoop out of the ladle, you know, the ladle full out of the giant pot of soup, which is the electric grid. So the concept really is, is just we're supporting more clean energy being put into that cauldron, if you will. Community choice aggregation is not legal in the state of Arizona. And so there's some elements around that, specifically even to that Solar For All Grant I just mentioned, that we continue to work on and encourage the Arizona Corporation Commission to allow for community choice aggregation in Arizona, because that would address exactly what you're talking about. But at this point in time, we can't say specifically, we want our energy. We don't get to choose where it comes from. We knew going into the Green Power Partners Program that the energy was specifically coming, coming from that New Mexico wind farm. The way that the utilities, and this is where I'm really not an expert, but the, they essentially sell those credits. They say, we are, we know that we've got this much energy coming from this wind development, and we need to sell out. We've got these, this many clean energy credits available. So we don't really get to pick where it's coming from, per se.
Do you know?
I actually do not know the negotiations on the Babbitt Agreement, but I'd be happy to look into that for asking.
Well, I would like to have information on the sequestration. We went to a regular night and an hour. The amount of information and technology and what's happening just here in Flagstaff and in Arizona, but I think I would benefit from it. I don't know about rest of council. It's mind-blowing.
Absolutely. I would, yeah, we would be honored. And just as a reminder, in our carbon neutrality goals are in our plan, our toolbox, 56% of our strategies are rooted in carbon sequestration. So we want to really bring in that market transition, support that equally as exploring opportunities for a dynamic portfolio. We'd be happy to put that together. I think you should close with a bad joke, too.
Yeah. Why are you calling me a bad joke? Nicole, Dan, and Heidi, appreciate it. All right, we're, we're doing great. All right, Rick, yeah. Right. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Before I jump into this part of the slide, I want to take a couple minutes to share some great news for you all related to finance and bonds and, and that stuff. Last week, Brandy and I and Stiefel team did some presentations to some rating agencies, S&amp;P and Moody's, very in-depth with a lot of information. We got our results this week.
And?
And S&amp;P has upgraded us from a double A neutral to a double A positive. So close that next step and that next range of a double A plus. Just didn't get there. I don't know why they didn't get us the plus, but amazing news. We've been stable for many, many years, but we were able to tell them the great things going on. The only levels above it is A, A plus, and a triple A rating. So we are in the high grade of ratings from S&amp;P. Moody's provided us a rating, and their scale's a little bit different. They gave us an A, small a, one. That's an upgrade. Rating was A, small a, two, is how they kind of go through their processes. So we did get an upgrade from Moody's. So we're thrilled to hear that from them, and we are just one step away from a prime rating is a, A, small a, small a, is how their ratings go. So a little different, but I will be sharing more information with, with council and probably do a press release on this. Just amazing news. It's, it's not all financial, it's about our community, what we're delivering, economic vitality, community development, our businesses, it's, it's the spectrum of what we do as an organization. So really proud of that and proud of this organization.
Yeah. Briefly on what that means from a financial standpoint, and
Good letters.
Better rating, though, it, more than that, Rick, come on.
For interest. Yeah. Yeah, so we're gonna issue our offering statement today. We're trying to get that out today. We'll give agencies a chance to look at them. As we develop what we want to go to market, this is critical to position us as far as, you know, what type of spread of interest rates we are gonna ask for and request for our bonds. So this does provide a positive direction on our interest expense for our bonds, which frees up more capacity in our geo-bond fund, secondary property tax. So issuing probably about two weeks, and looking forward to that, and we'll share that success with you, too. So, yeah, great news.
Thank you.
You're welcome. To the end of the day on that, but I just couldn't hold it in. I gotta share that. All right. So we're gonna close out with the revenue toolbox as well as outlook of our five-year plans for council, giving you kind of the big picture information. The revenue toolbox or resource toolbox, this is in your packet with a lot of other great information. We talked about this a year ago, so I'm not gonna go in all details about the revenue streams and, and that. We've got this handy tool, it kind of ties to the Color Money document, and provides you kind of those things of what's available for our organization in revenue areas. The first group that we have on our toolbox is the user fees and rates. These are adopted and approved by council, generally through a rate study and so forth that we bring back for council to consideration. So those have your control as far as what we do there. Property taxes, oh, going back to the color bags, their fees are across all of our, general fund, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds. So you'll see the money bags kind of line up to what areas can use these types of revenues, which is important to keep those in line. Now, the next group is property taxes that you are familiar with. Our primary property tax goes into our general fund as a resource to pay for operations citywide. And then we have a secondary property tax, which is our, talking about our geo-bonds and our issuance of debt paid back by secondary property tax. That all goes to our debt service funds, not available for other uses. We have transaction privilege taxes, excuse me, or sales tax, well-known for. These are required to be approved by voters, and they all have sunsets, so we, when we want to renew, we gotta get continued authorization on these. There's three areas that we have sales tax for, is our general fund sales tax of 1% that we have, well, transportation taxes, 419, the Fort Lone Tree overpass, transit taxes, road repairs, street safety, a lot of taxes build that group as special revenue funds. Our BBB taxes that you've been hearing about in that renewal coming forward and going back to the voters. Debt options, there is a multitude of debt options we have, and I'm embarrassed to say I left general obligation debt off this slide. I just noticed it as I was talking about the red.
I noticed it right away.
Hang it. So, so general obligation bonds are our big one. Debt is for a lot of the funds in the Your debts is for a lot of the funds in the organization, usually backed by our user fees that we adopt. Typical participations, most known for our pension bonds that we did, where you lease your property and pay it back with debt. We do several loans and leases. A lot of loans we do is with WIF, Water Infrastructure Finance of Arizona. Usually has favorable rates there. And we can do capital leases and those kinds of things for our organization. Municipal improvement district debt. We are able to issue that for districts that want to improve. We've done this for downtown area in another area in the town. We're looking at this for JWP, but that's probably not the option we're going to go with. But this is a way for the municipality to issue debt, favorable debt and get these improvements done. Council can adopt development fees for our organization. Currently we have public safety ones for police and fire for a multitude of things such as vehicles, facilities and so forth. And then different than development fees are capacity fees, and these are water services capacity fees. You're learning a lot about those and considering adopting load rates in the coming month also. Grants, grants, grants. Every fund can use grants. You heard a lot about what we, we do as an organization, bringing in that outside source, matching our revenues to deliver a lot of great projects. And of course, state and federal appropriations. We had that conversation yesterday. Many opportunities we want to get out there. And most recently, we had some state appropriations that really helped us last year in the current year. So those things in toolbox, just high level for that. But then I want to, I was asked to share kind of some, some thoughts and some outlooks as far as our five-year plans with you. Yes.
Show a question on the bonds that you didn't list. And I know that you just mentioned with our new rating for capacity, but what is our current bond capacity? I know when we retire debt and
Yeah. In the twenty-year period, I haven't looked at the number lately. With the debt we have existing paying plus the new issues we got approved. As those pay off over the twenty-year period, it's in, I want to say it's in the thirty million dollar range, maybe a little bit higher. You get it?
Last it was forty million.
Forty? I can get you exact numbers later though, kind of, kind of where
Give me a general.
Every year we add another year. So that adds that capacity.
We're retiring debt yearly, I would imagine, or every five years?
Every year. We're retiring principal, principal, principal. Then we add a clear, clean year that we don't have debt out. We tried to do that twenty-year debt. We could go longer. Yeah, we keep growing capacity every year.
Get back on that question. Give it some context. I don't know my amount of views of what you're thinking in, but I fielded questions recently about our water study and those rates and our infrastructure needs there. Why we wouldn't bond for those needed projects instead of increasing rates? Maybe this is a good opportunity on the record to speak publicly about for that question.
I'll give some context and please jump in. Generally we want debt to be paid for by water user rates, but occasionally we do go outside that realm because we understand water service facilities, wastewater era, community-wide benefit. So recently we did go out for voters, those types of debt for stormwater and for wastewater. The more we can back on rates, the better. So it really ties to those who are receiving the service and delivering the service is our approach. But we also understand there are some big needs in the future into water, wastewater and so forth. Plan upgrades as far as maybe future water development in some fashion. And so we think at this point, holding those steady is a good thing to do when we have to have that conversation about the mixed use of funding when we get to the big projects in the future. So you know, that's why we really haven't come forward with anything in this year's election to issue any of these geo bonds for us. But geo bonds are not used across the organization. You know, there's, could be parks, needs, recreation needs, equipment, facilities, it could use a multiple uses as far as geo bonds. So we also have to weigh against those needs. Do we need to fund part of a fire station as we grow on JWP? Do we want to reserve some of that capacity for that kind of conversation? So a lot of moving parts, but that's kind of the, the big picture where we were thinking about the geo capacity.
You said what I was going to, Rick, and thank you. Water treatment is the big one that's out there on the horizon and most certainly we'll be looking at a multitude of sources to fund that and likely debt issuance. So.
I appreciate Vice Mayor's comment because that's why I was asking the question, but and I, I do agree that we shouldn't go to bond funding for cover the operations and maintenance of a utility, but we do have some big ticket items and put that all on the backs of rate pairs. It's not settling well with me. So my, my mind is, I mean, because it's huge. So we'll have that conversation session, but just trying to understand all of our options.
It's a balance, you know, rate pairs versus property tax. Hey, you know, people are still funding it in some fashions, just matter how it hits their pocketbook and delivers. Maybe where you were going.
That's what I was going to say. In effect, what you're doing and saying, instead of having the water users pay for their water, saying, well, we'll just put it on property taxes. In effect, what this would be. The question is, do you want to keep it as an enterprise fund? You say, no, it's not really totally enterprise fund. We'll pay for it with property tax. But it boils down to
There's, there's valleys in both.
I mean, I'm not saying which is better. I'm just saying that's what we're talking about. Because when you say geo bonds, that implies property tax.
That's how the resource pays back. You can issue geo bonds raises to pay them back with water revenues or wastewater revenues. We've done that in the past where we've gone to voters for that authorization as a a geo bond debt with the intention of paying back with water revenues. If you're a little bit favorable rate, you know, brings down that interest expense, but we committed utility revenue to pay it back. But we still have to go to voters. Voters have to approve because we are pledging secondary property tax, even though
So the debt servicing that shows up on our budget projections on water services, that debt servicing is currently from past geo bonds?
There's nothing in water services for geo bond. Past, those are all paid off at this.
So this is future.
Those would be in a secondary property.
The debt servicing showing up on there.
Is all revenue bonds and WIF loans.
Okay.
All just resources. All right. As we go into our five-year plan outlooks. You know, this is really intended to be a high-level picture of where some of our funds stand. This is not all funds, but the majority of them in this conversation. This is a combination of input from the financial side, the finance team, five-year planning, as well as the operational side, you know, the, the people kind of own the funds or the operations within each fund have shared some of their thoughts here. We're going to talk about some of the positive sides within these funds as well as area concerns. And I'd hate to say negative, but the concerns. But we usually address it and we're a team that resolves these kinds of things, just really pressures to the funds. You've got a whole lot of information today as far as positive. So I, I'm not going to go into a ton of the positive stuff, but we just heard a couple of hours of the great stuff delivering by all the funds in the organization. So we'll, we'll go through these by funds. Common thing you'll hear is a higher cost of business, inflation, staffing costs and those kinds of things. As well as there will be, hence that there's probably someplace, other places we need fee increases. And we'll be coming back with you at some point, hopefully in the near future about the cost recovery policies and a schedule of how we look at other rates and fees that we'll bring in council. So jumping into our general fund first, this is our largest fund in the organization. There is a lot of, a lot of positives to it as far as the revenue resources on the financial side is a great mix. We're like a third of it is our sales tax, a third of it is our state shared revenues. And the other third is property taxes, fees, franchise fees and those kinds of things. So it's great to have a mix like that. So when one of these categories has a blip, such as income tax sharing, the balance of the other spots really help us and keep us strong as an organization. We keep, continue to beat our revenue projections and expectations. We have good growth in this community and organization. We hope to see that in the future continuing. This organization, and this is not just general funds, made significant impacts to compensation over the last three to four years. So we're hoping to really build that, keep our staff strong and compensated well. Our general fund has a very healthy fund balance right now. Over the next ten years, we will stay above twenty percent. Our lowest goal is fifteen percent. So we're going to maintain that very well. This is one of the things that both Moody's and S and P recognized our strength here. We've one-time resources have been converted to ongoing resource over this, this cycle. We were growing over the last couple of years. We were able to start addressing some of those resources. And our property tax as far as revenue basis, we do have capacity still in our property tax, primary property tax, which council decides and assess the rate based on that two percent increase annually. Areas of concern or things we watch. One thing I didn't put on here is recognizing our general fund. There are fourteen of the sixteen divisions that have a section within the general fund. So you can see that all of our divisions, as we're working with the resources the general fund has, has a lot of push and pull and needs of our organization. So we try and work really well to, to spread that, but it is, is challenging as an organization, have that many services within our general fund. The two exceptions are, are water services. They are totally revenue-based as well as sustainability. We do provide funding in some fashions, but they are outside, no, no sections in the general fund. Areas of concern are state shared tax revenues. We talked about the income taxes. We've heard some positive sides to it yesterday, that the refunds are not as big as they expected. We'll know what April brings. We haven't seen those numbers. But you know, just even the pressures of the state to think about sweeping or changing formulas is always a concern that they, they could do. More prominently, they've done it with the HERF funds and the HERF revenue shares in past years. We really hope they don't start addressing those or attacking those in our organization or all the cities, citywide. The cost of growth, the market-based pay plan, it is a great, a great thing to do, but it's costly. Great amount of investments. We've still got a bit to go. Starting wage for all our funds continue to grow. We want to stay ahead of our minimum wage. But with the minimum wage is, is another concern is how the state continues to think we did something wrong. As far as the voters approving a minimum wage that our citizens it wasn't the city's behalf, it was the citizens who chose that. But we keep seeing legislation about sweeping or pulling bonds or penalizing cities. We are a target for them. The legislative session talked about giving businesses tax, Chris, and then having us pay for ridiculous thing to talk about. They want us to pay for their cost of minimum wage for delivering their services in our organization. We're fighting that. We're, we're winning that and we hope we do very well there. Go ahead.
Mention was made earlier about our state lobbyist, and I think council knows this, but our state lobbyist was very effective in filling the most recent legislation that would have impacted us. Exactly on point with what you just said.
That was crazy. It'll be back. That's, that's the sad thing. It keeps coming back. So definitely thanks for our lobbyists and we're providing a lot of information that we could for them. Some of our annual operating budgets still do have that one-time ongoing resource. We couldn't get the whole needle moved. About two point one remains, but we're getting close. And these are the resource that we expect that they need annually within their sections. And of course, the increase, just one increased need for fleet investment funding as well as pushing them toward the electric side of vehicles. We did provide some funding, but we know we've got to do more over the next couple of years. As well as fire apparatus, as they age out, those are very costly, expensive and it's, it's a quick hit to us. We've been very fortunate with the, the bond measure to get the wildland fire equipment and hopefully get those soon. But yeah, it's always something on our, our minds as we go forward. Any other things, this is just a small hope of what we think about. And we're concerned as, as we go through each year's budget. Do have to say, forgot this note. We do have structurally balanced five-year plans. We, we only commit the expenditures to the resources we have for all our funds. While we do have these concerns in the future, we always are proactive and making sure we balance our resources. So most of our funds are, are tenures actually. You don't necessarily see that in a budget process, but we do go above and beyond through strong financial planning. Our next group is our special revenue funds within the organization. There are several of them here for us to talk about. Our highway user revenue fund is our first one. This is the one that utilizes gas tax, shared revenues for, from the state that distributes to our cities. Some positive notes here. The snow operations have, have done a great job over the last year being very efficient and working on their operations to delivering those in our community. Even with the short staffing that we, we dealt with this year, we're fortunate we didn't have the previous year's snow. But they're there, they're, they do step up and they do a great work keeping our roads clear snow removed from our roads. Street lighting progress is a positive for HERF for, for a couple of reasons. We're moving that needle on the, on the sleds. As well as we're fortunate to get outside funding through transportation funds to deliver these. Generally may have fallen on the highway user revenue fronts because these are streetlights, but the benefit of, of the tax and the voters definitely helped the HERF fund. Equipment continues to be advancing in technologies and efficiencies. We may not be able to electrify everything today, but we can see things in the future. How those are advancing in utilization efficiencies that are for our streets. Another area of concern. Of course, CDL staffing this winter, we, we couldn't quite get fully staffed with CDL. That's a challenge. We're competing with other agencies within the community, ADOT, Mountain Lion and so forth. But we keep trying to address this, trying to get the right compensation in place. But it's a challenge to get staffing in these areas. The added service areas, the growth in our organization, adding more streets as well as a multimodal service expectations, your bike lanes, your sidewalks and so forth. Some of this stuff falls outside of what the HERF tax intention was. So we got to start thinking about how we're going to maintain those in the long term. We're, we're interested. We want to do these separated things, bike lanes and this enhanced service. But there is a higher need and But there is a higher need and expectation of service levels too. So those are some of the challenges that we're talking about within our HERF funds. The electric vehicle impacts, the cost of those are a little bit high at this point. And we hope to see some, some numbers coming down and being more affordable over the next couple of years. But something we're keeping an eye on in our HERF. Transportation funds, they're having strong revenue growth like our general sales tax. They kind of mirror the general fund, terms of growth, similar categories are taxed. They've also been fortunate to get a lot of grant funding with their projects. The downtown mile's been a big add as well as the bike lanes on Butler are huge added value to our organization to deliver these projects. They have a very healthy fund balance and we look forward to delivering a lot of capital improvements over the next couple of years. I think we're going to see a lot, a lot of downtown area and citywide. Areas with a concern within the transportation fund, we talked about this yesterday, project staffing for project management, we, we are struggling in that area, but we're trying to make the right strides and changes to get people on board. That translates into workload, they can only deliver so much within their capacity. So it may delay projects that we can deliver. Property acquisitions, it's always a difficult conversation when we want to buy property, hopefully come to an agreement or take property for these many improvements we want to do over the next several years. Water resource infrastructure protection fund, this was the fee council approved. It's tied to water gallons, but it helps fund protection of our very available water services infrastructure, water, wastewater, stormwater and so forth. Positives here, you know, having this type of fund for active well fire management is huge. Not many cities go this path and, and provide a funding source for their organization to spend a lot of money thinning, we've got to make sure we're maintaining it in the future and keeping that healthy force around us. So we're very grateful for that as well as grant funding. Having this operation as a match to grant funding to help bring more grants into our organization for future thinning projects and so forth. Areas of concern, of course, wildfire risk continues to be increasing and we're always aware of that in our organization due to climate changes. But we want to keep ahead of that and thin the best we can. The evolution of the programs within the RIP, we want to make sure we're doing really good education and outreach and engagement with our community about their, how they can be responsible in their areas of town. And of course, operation costs, you know, the, the cost of personnel and commodities continue to outpace the revenues. So we set the rate in 2020. So this may be one that it gets into that, that flow of rate increases that you may see over the, the coming years to help continue to fund that program. Feel free to ask any questions or stop, the whole team's here to answer anything. Or do you want to get to lunch faster?
At the end of this, I have a question.
All right. The next group are also special revenue funds. These are all part of our economic vitality team. First is our library. We had some good conversations with the county board about our library taxes and assessments. And we got some positive outcomes that we are being supported for a 2% increase in our, what's the county secondary property tax for the district, which is very valuable to deliver. Keep up with the cost of, of services of delivering our library services. The, we are addressing some major infrastructure improvements, the boilers being replaced downtown. The windows, they have been on our radar, I don't know how many years, five plus years. And it's great to see that getting done. Probably about three, four years ago, we did the roof replacements where we saw that aging. So we're really maintaining our facilities. These are really city-owned facilities within town that we're investing the dollars with. And some library tax funds also go to those capital improvements. Some of the concerns, of course, is the starting wage impacts to libraries. As that creeps up, we do compress and the cost of providing those services increase. And they do have really a limited amount of resources for those big projects, the big capital needs that they may have for replacing a bus or the big infrastructure things we did. So we generally do, as far as we know, these are city assets and we want to support those through general fund or so forth. Our BBB funds, we had a little bit of conversation on these today. These had a quick rebound in growth since the 2020 COVID pandemic. It's back on track. In two years, we're doing very well and projections are good. As Heidi mentioned, we're going to hit 12 million this year. And in the five years, we're going to be over 13 million plus in our BBB taxes. You know, the positive about this is, is, is not just city residents paying for these, these taxes, these improvements. Restaurants, hotels and bars also have a visitor impact. There's probably about 60% of our, or plus of our BBB tax that comes from those, those visitors outside our community. So they are helping us deliver many things, many projects, talking about projects. You know, a lot about in the CIP retreats about projects being delivered. We have a great group that's really starting to spend and deliver things. For them, they're already spending monies on the Centennial, we're looking for those kinds of things and marketing. We talked about their help, ADA ramp as well as they're going to help with the action center. They're really investing those things that people will see in our community. BBB rec is really starting to build funds to really give some impact in our community. A new park coming online, hopefully in the next year or so. The restrooms, those kinds of things are really critical infrastructure that we're starting to get to address from their capacity. So great news there. Area concern, of course, is BBB tax rule, it's, it's a concern, but we feel favorable. I think this has really shown great benefit to our organization through the projects delivered throughout the organization through what we do as, as these, these teams deliver. Yeah, I, I think we're going to have a, a great job educating on that and hopefully we have a turnout and approval. We continue that, that tax. Park flag is special revenue fund paid for with the parking revenues downtown. We were shut down for a few years for COVID, but this, these numbers have bounced back to pre-COVID numbers, very positive. And the rate's still a dollar, still rather cheap for, for parking downtown, but.
Hard to, you say that. It's just a dollar.
It's true, just a dollar for each hour. Valuable and not all day, there's, there's times you don't have to pay. And easy to pay, we got all the kiosks, easy for people to pay. You know, we have the group, our flag group downtown, you know, they're helping visitors in our community as they come. We're not seeing any issues as far as people using those kiosks to, to pay their fees and, and be part of our downtown community. So that's great news. We appreciate your help as far as parking enforcement. As those fines continue to accrue, we knew there needs to be a solution or a change in how we do business downtown, really changing how, how people react to paying parking downtown, changing that behavior. I'm never going to pay these fees. So positive, definitely coming out of park flag there. Some negatives is, you know, cost of parking infrastructure. We have a goal, we want to continue to set aside funds. We know we want to add some parking structures or facilities downtown, but the cost keeps going up. The longer we go, the more it's going to cost. Of course, staffing, it's always hard to keep staff in, in park flag. I think they're doing better, you know, I don't know how many vacancies, maybe we have vacancies later today, but. So there's park flags outlook. From there, we're going to go into our enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are generally those that are self-supported through their fees and these are letting, letting them perform. First off, we want to talk about solid waste. Definitely some positives here as far as the landfill investments, the road construction has begun. I was talking to, to Sam and Scott yesterday about this. Area's been cleared, the road's been milled and, and it's, it's moving along. Definitely is something we've been trying to address for many years to help that a safer road and more efficient road to our landfill. And it's, and the positive thing, recycle continues. We, we know when Norton left as far as recycling, this team stepped up, the organization stepped up. We're continuing to continue, continue to receive and collect recycling services. It looks different today and we'll keep talking about recycling in our community, but level of service. Our areas of concern here is, is also CDL staffing. As mentioned before, it's definitely competition in our community for those qualified drivers. Ability of the recycling program, while it's positive, we're delivering it. We, we want to make sure the growth, the future of recycling and having those conversations is, is something that will come forward, continued conversations. And where that gets addressed, potentially revenue increases may have to incur to continue, continue level of services that we have. Capital project cost increase, like I said, you may hear some similar things through many of these funds. Continue to grow and, and of course, outpacing our revenue growth in, in solid ways. So this is another area that in the next year or two, you'll probably see a rate conversation, a rate study and so forth coming, coming forth. Sustainability, that fund has a lot of great positives. You, you heard a lot from Nicole today and definitely going to find as many grants as we can and big grants for coming into our organization. We hope we get a lot of those awarded. So federal funding is, is, is available, it's out there. The federal government did a lot of infrastructure funding and sustainability needs the last couple of years and, and we're going, going for it. We're looking for those. State and regional funding as well as collaborations. We all talked about the Four Corners partnership. Again, we, we don't have to do this alone, we've got people to help us and, and we can collaborate and work together. Technologies are getting better, they're advancing. While we may not have been ready at day one to, to move to all electric. We see technologies getting better and more efficient, hopefully more cost-effective too. This area is seeing some revenue growth, maybe not to the level we want, but because council set the rate to be based on services that people use in our community based on their trash, water and so forth. As those changes, as community members use more or less, the rate also benefits from that, that growth. And they've had a little bit of growth over the last couple of years to help them.
Your water bottle, the light's going off.
Oh, just shake it so it thinks I drank something.
Go ahead and drink it.
Well, I just shake it.
That's the craziest thing.
Does it tell you when to drink? Nope.
It's like.
They remind her?
Oh, I'm here, take a drink.
You have to drink it.
Cheers, everyone. Probably should have let that back there.
Water bottle?
It is, it, it helps because it'll sit on my desk all day long.
Yeah, he's got a charging station for it.
It's so powered.
Man, lost my spot. Sustainability, okay. Areas of concern, the increasing needs to provide service community and funding the carbon neutrality plan. The equity, we want to make sure are those less fortunate or, or stay in advance with carbon neutrality and, and those changing environments as well as just the cost of funding a carbon neutrality plan. We don't have the perfect plan. We kind of addressed it as, as we have some opportunities, grants will help us deliver quite a bit. But we want to keep that in our forefront that it is, is costly and we'll, we'll see how we can manage that. Legislative restrictions, you know, our state has certain restrictions as far as what we can do with our, our revenues from sustainability. So we got to address those. It's great to have a lobbyist to help us and Nicole's team to, to get to the legislator, get in their ears to change things to better what we can deliver in our organization. That goes to lack of legislation addressing climate action. That's not really something that is in the current code. So we're, we're trying to advance that, make that more open for communities to be able to deliver within our state. Airport fund is our next one. A great positive here is again, federal funding, grants, the CURES fund was huge. To have that resource to pay for our operations over the last three and a half, four years has done a lot of good, a lot of improvements, a lot of facility improvements at the airport. That has been delivered, we're close that out this next month, I think, is when that ends. And they really have a goal to spend 100% and, and get those things done. So that definitely freed up the stress of, of the airport fund and delivering those improvements. We have the new airport lease that council approved, the Jeter property. We'll have revenues coming in from that in a few years. And the airport fund, airport staff, Brian Gaul and his team are, if you think of Florida, where are we missing as far as revenues and, and things we can address at the airport and grow and make the airport even more self-sustaining? You know, adjusting the landing fees for a, a longer period of time to catch more airlines or operations landing. Looking at the parking options, do we have the right rate in place? Do we need to look at those as far as resources? Badging, we're one of the few airports that don't charge people who need badges to be part of our airport and get through secured areas. Working with our rental car agencies, we're looking at new lease as well as breaking off the water service. Right now they get water service free, so figuring out how can we meter them and actually help them pay for their water use. And maybe they conserve a little better in the same spot. Property marketing, there's lots, there's a few properties around the airport that we're looking to maybe market and get some either fires or lease, land leases to, to grow revenues around the corridor of the airport. Yeah, at least, at least a sale of property. So Brian's really thinking about this, how can he make his, his fund self-sustaining for the organization? We've made a lot of strides, but we've got a little bit of work to, to do, which goes to the area concerns. They're not quite there, they still needed a little bit of general fund support. The last few years, they've been fine, but we see that as we have not got a second airline and things have changed. There is some general fund support for them. A second airline is really critical and something we want to invest and give to our organization to regain their enterprise status. And our last ones are water funds. This has been a topic for the last year now, talking about rates. We're, we're thrilled that we're bringing rates forward for council consideration to help look at them, make sure they're distributed and users are paying the fair share through the cost of service studies and help funding our ongoing operating expenses as well as investing in, in capital expenditures. They benefited from direct funding as far as stormwater. We got the almost $9 million, which we turned around and invested into that Highway 180 culvert. which we turned around and invested into that Highway 180 Culvert project. It was five million, our projected year or so ago, now it's seven million. So that was a big win for, for the stormwater funding in our community as well as the proposition 441 to help with Bruce Wash. They've got concerns about again, inflation, cost of projects continue to go up. The longer wait, the more cost it incurs. Staffing, they're around eighty percent, but you know, still dealing with vacancies in their area. As well as of course, expenses are outpacing the revenues. That's why we did come forward with the rate increase. Lastly is our Flagstaff Housing Authority. Some positives here, we got the Navigator position funded ongoing for us. Twenty-five percent of this general fund. The bond funds are a huge positive. And we're going to help put twenty million dollars into affordable housing, which is huge. You don't see many communities doing that. In fact, we're already ready to spend a bunch of it. So we're issuing about ten million of those bonds with this upcoming offering. Getting new vouchers is positive. Allow us to focus on during youth homeless, risk of homeless, domestic violence and so forth. Lot of, lot of great positives going on with our Flagstaff Housing Authority. On the con side, our budget is always crazy. We don't know where they're going to turn and go sometimes if they have revenue concerns, it could trickle down and impact us as well as when they do shutdowns. But we're ready. If they do a shutdown, we're ready to address it in our community. But those are always concerns. Shifting responsibilities without resources comes, sometimes you hear a little chatter about, hey, you guys can take over this program, but it doesn't come with any funding. We're keeping on those kinds of things and make sure we're in the front of that. Aging infrastructure of the housing. Why we need those redevelopment funds, address those infrastructure systems. And new vouchers are fantastic, but the more you add, the more pressures it puts on staff. So that's one of those areas that maybe a staffing change will need it in the future. We're not quite there. But we're going to go get the vouchers we can and we'll try to deliver the most we can for our organization. So that is it and questions, comments?
I have a question, Rick. My favorite topic, water rates. So we talked about GO bonds, but we also have revenue bonds in WIPA. And oh, thank you for answering on the GO bonds.
Sorry, I haven't got my tree.
It's all right. No, I figured we'd get to it today. But on the the information that was sent to us by Syntec, Syntec?
Stentec.
Stentec. It shows that if we were to stay with our rates proposed. It's required standard of making one point two times debt servicing. So you got debt and you got your revenues have to cover it by one point two times. Right away in 2024, we're at three point seven times debt coverage ratio. And it goes up to 2030 almost. It's in the water. I'm just talking water. It, it, the information is so spread out, I haven't had a chance to combine it all. But and then up to 2030, we're almost seven times the requirement to debt service. So that tells me we have capacity. Obviously that's if we put the rates proposed. But we have opportunity to either not have that much of a rate increase because, but our revenues exceed what are required for our debt servicing or we could do more debt like revenue bonds or with a ways to debt service. So is there, besides that requirement of the one point two times debt coverage ratio, is there in our rating? Is there anything else affecting our ability to go after revenue? Because revenue bonds don't have to go to the voters. They're just based on our ability to pay a lot.
Um, I haven't had a chance to look into detail for that, that question that you asked and I will get, get to it. When we look at debt and issue debt for our water funds, we look at them collaboratively with, with solid stormwater reclaim and all of them funds overall capacity. Part of the push on not wanting to go to the one point two so forth is stormwater has some major debt for real flag. So that is, is using up some of that capacity throughout them. That's just one of those things that we're watching why we look by funds that may not be there.
Knowing you, Rick, I know that debt service coverage is far above what we need.
But I haven't, I hadn't had the opportunity to see, see where our debt projects are over the next couple of years. We are issuing a lot of debt in those rating studies.
And this question is mainly just for all of us to understand as we go into our working schedule session, when we talk about this, that there is that opportunity if we listen this or expand that. We do have some financing capacities over and above what is proposed in the rate schedule proposal.
For a draft, yes. No, but of course, you may issue the debt, but it still has to be paid for debt service. You know, of course, that affects your rates. One-time money versus, one-time money versus rates, but yeah, there's a whole economics about it. So I'll get you more information on that and.
And I'll pull back the stormwater rate proposal to see, do my own little math.
Stormwater side.
Yeah, just to combine it. That's used to be what we had to do as a commercial lender is to come up with that ratio and see how covered we were. So thank you.
We'll keep a good eye on that. Anything else? Thank you. Thanks. All right. Everybody know what comes next? Who's hungry?
Lunch.
Each time. Yes.
A little announcement, Jen is offering, Jen, can you come up and talk about your little tour that you're putting together?
Where you go out to?
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Rick.
Our biggest project is getting the electric vehicle chargers here at Core Services. So I can show you where two of them are going to be placed. We'll have one placed, we'll have two placed at Solid Waste and then an additional two at Fleet. But I can show you our progress and May has this really cute little cutout of construction zone. So if you guys want a picture, it's an opportunity to get a picture with a cute little cutout zone. So we'll do that. I don't know when's a good time. We can do it right now, real quick and then get you guys to.
Yeah, and then lunch.
And then lunch, yep.
Returning it.
Return is twelve thirty.
Shut off this last part. Now there's no pressure on anyone. Got a few items left. Greg is up for the rest of this. So what time we get out now is one hundred percent to him. Okay? Just so you know, no pressure. Great. Hey, well, let's give them a little bit of encouragement.
Oh, let it go, Greg.
That was the weakest applause ever. Thank you. Had a good lunch. Mayor, stop it. This is the part of the budget retreat where we get to kind of look at everything that has been talked about in bouncing back to council to see what if any items you would like to have a little more discussion of or what items we missed that you would like to have or ideas that have emerged that you'd like to talk about. And you know, I want to preface by noting, you know, at these retreats in years past, we didn't always do this. Council at, at one point said, you know, you need a section at the end where we can talk about things that we haven't talked about. So that's what this is. I have taken the liberty of jotting down some notes to summarize everything. You of course have your agenda in front of you. So you know what we talked about. So I put mine in. It's more like themes and talking points. And I use the national.
Cycling.
Yeah. That's the good news. The bad news is it's really small font and it covers like both sides of the napkin. So I'll be quick. What?
Could you repeat that?
No. This is all for Rebecca. We don't need to talk a lot or recap the fiscal health. I'll note that Rick's presentation of just recent really highlighted fiscal health. Bond ratings, thanks, Rick, for sharing. That's really great news. That's really important. Also, I heard you mention the reserves over twenty percent. Yeah. Also, good news. Which thought maybe someday we should think about targeting twenty percent for our reserves. But we don't have to talk about that today. All of this is based upon good budgeting. Prior years. Of course, everything carries over and all of this is predicated upon good policies. Staff has prepared and council has adopted through the years. So good for us, right? A central theme this retreat, like it was a year ago and like it was the year before that is investing in our employees. Want to just recap because you had a lot of information on that. And it's not just one thing, it's multifaceted. Investment in our employees is a journey. It's, it's not checkbox. And we, we talk about this a lot at the staff level. It is a journey and it, and it takes time. Years ago, not that long ago, we were we were in a place where we had teams or regimens throughout the city. Turns about equity, parity, compensation. And morale was, was not good. And people were not, a lot of people, especially in the general pay plan, were not receiving receiving any raises. There, there were no merit increases. Occasionally, there was a cost of living adjustment and that was it. And that had its genesis all the way back to the Great Recession. When everybody was cutting back with their expenditures and a lot of things lingered and it's not just unique to Flagstaff. That's, that's a narrative in many, many places. We have come a long ways and we've, we've been on this journey to reinstate some things that used to be in place and put into place some new things that our employees were telling us were needed, bringing about a sense of equity in the organization. We saw that graphic and there is discussion. Council member Matthews had some very good comments on that and I could not disagree with them. You had ten percent improvement. Yeah, that's good. It's not, it's not a box that we check, right? So what is the good takeaway there? Well, we've stopped the slide. If you remember that graphic going in a downward trend. And, and that was all the way on the last survey, which was 2019, still going downward. Since then, seeing an upward tick and that is so important for us because it tells us heading in the right direction. We have talked about vacancy. We've talked about burnout and council will get some reports on this when we talk about the survey from this year. And we've talked about recruitment and all of these things interconnect. As you would imagine, council, you have received, I think, late yesterday, thank you, Jen Caputo. Whoever it was who sent out the information, I think it was you, yep, on the on the new employee requests. Was it Scott? Who's Heidi Derryberry? Thank you for that. Look for an email if you haven't seen it from Heidi Derryberry asking for the information that Mayor you and Councilmember Sweet asked for. You, you now have that at your fingertips. Keep staying tuned on this discussion of vacancy and recruitment. And we're not blasting things over for council. We have a lot of work to do, but we're trying hard. When I say we, across the organization, it's the entire leadership team, it's HR, it's the budget team. There's a lot of effort. But I mentioned it's multifaceted. We're doing some things to enhance our work environment as well. We're in a building right now that's relatively new. Good for Public Works to have this facility. Because we, we know it's a nice facility and it works well for this purpose, but it's a wonderful facility for the staff who calls this home. But other things, you know, our library, the new windows, can't tell you how we're excited we are about that. The new entryway. As we speak, the reason there's a pop-up library in City Hall is they're getting a new boiler at the library. These are big, big things to enhance, not just our community of buildings, but enhance the facilities within which our staff works eight hours a day. Employee recognition, we don't have to go on about that, is, is very important. Training, we noted a lot of things in play. We need to do more. And then it all comes down, as we know, to compensation. I, I don't want to recap everything that was talked about that. Not going to do that to you on a Friday afternoon. I will mention something that I don't know that was mentioned enough. There is a team that has been put together called the Class and Compensation Team. And it comprises individuals, you know, of course, from HR, EAC. I don't know if EAC is on that team. Yeah, they are. Our office, city manager's office, finance and a few others. Leo having pencils on that team. Thank you Sterling for his services. And and Jessica Figurito and others. And we work hard. We just met this week. We meet on a regular basis to talk about the priorities and to formulate what's next as we go along this journey, you know, in terms of class and comp adjustments. This is the team that's overseeing the market rate adjustments. Or at least getting them into play, identifying who needs to. HR is doing a lot of the lift here, but, but this team's kind of an oversight team, if you will. But so, you know, out of all of this effort has been the creation of this new team and they're, and they're working. So we're very proud of that. And recent presentations to the leadership team, extended leadership team are happening. We're being very, very transparent about this class and comp thing. That's another thing that we owe it to our employees is not just to do these things, but to explain to them how we're doing these things. What factors into deciding who has their compensation evaluated from a market standpoint? That's very important to our employees. They want to know who's on the list and, and what the priorities are. Moving on. Capital projects, yep, we've talked a lot about that. You had a retreat before in March and you got a good summary of things. Again, the things that are in place, Bruce Wash is happening. I met with one of the, two of the residents out there recently. Just to see how things are going now that Linda Vista is closed, you know, and it's, there's a lot of work happening there, as you would imagine. I, I sometimes wonder, it's like, we don't hear from that neighborhood like we used to. And I think that all things considered is a good thing. Because I, I think there's one, the outreach is really good. Sarah and her, Sarah Langley and her team. Their, and the consultants, there's been a lot of outreach to the neighborhoods as to what's going on. People are not in the dark. The other is people see construction, they see progress. That's why I was asking Steve about Highway 180. When, when people see that things are happening. They know that maybe the sandbag walls, you know, it could be less in the future. Maybe in some instances, they can go. could be less in the future. Maybe in some instances, they can go away. We're not there yet, but things are happening and I think that's good. We will by this time next year, I hope, and I think it'll happen, be talking about a pending project, a project that's in play with the Rio de Flag flood control. Hopefully this time next year that is underway, phase one. But he recently asked what the timeline is on that Board of Supervisors. We presented to them, Mayor and then Council, Vice Mayor. When was that presentation? Was that this week? Very good presentation. Ed Shank and the team knocked it out of the park. Graphics were great, the maps were great, everything was explained. They really appreciated it. The question came up, when does all this happen? And we all looked at each other. Phase one should start by this time next year. We think three to four years on phase one and then phase two. And the two will overlap at some point. Probably another three to four years, but we're eight years away from completion. There'll be some overlap. If Christine Cameron was here, she could check me on this. But I think, you know, we're several years away from seeing that project completed. At the DBA meeting yesterday, they said, well, after that, you know, we can see the floodplain map revision. And Sterling, you know how much effort goes into that and how much time it takes. There's, know that too. That can be a couple of year process. Call it.
Lo Mars and Lo Mars.
Lo Mars and Lo Mars.
Shannon knows it better.
Words that I challenge everybody to try to use in a normal conversation at some point. Lo Mars and Clo Mars. All of these things, and that's just the flood stuff when we talk about transportation and you had a bad information on that, all the bike and ped stuff. And then back to facilities. Good information here, a lot of work happening and it's all so much exciting. I want to touch briefly on something that was mentioned, the repurposing of facilities. A good discussion yesterday on the ICCC, okay. Cultural Center. You had Scott Overton present to you recently on the Montavo Building and the steam facility that is now underway. And there's a long list of other examples of where we have been repurposing vacant or dormant city facilities for other community purposes. We know how important that is to the council and to the community. It all goes then, if you will, into what the community values was talked about, portrays and lists, and that is in an inclusive community. And we heard about that in so many arenas, you know, resiliency projects, housing, just to name a few. But going back to yesterday's discussion, you had Hia present on the Service Partnership forms. What a great innovative approach that is. It's going to be a nice tool. So partnering with our services, you know, and as we were talking this week, there were efforts behind the scenes to usher through the new contract with Flagstaff Shelter Services. We're doing that because a year ago at this time, we talked about that and that contract is getting ready to be inked and the money allocated. And that will be an ongoing allocation, like it is with High Country Humane, like it is with United Way of Northern Arizona and a number of other service organizations we fund routinely. And now with this new form, when something else comes along, we'll at least have a bit of a process, right? To get that kind of formalized and in front of council in a way that is very thorough. And so when decisions are made, they're not made in a vacuum, but they're made with good information at hand. Very important. Inclusive community goes beyond just the bricks and mortar projects. Though it speaks to the programs and the services, of course. And, you know, there's just a lot budgetarily that we do to bolster and bolster our inclusivity within the community. And it touches just about everything frankly that we do here. Policies that council considers, the programs that you consider is all very strongly, I think, predicated upon that community value. Had good discussion about housing. I tried to write fast enough as we were going through and Sarah was walking and Dan were walking you through the many, many funding streams that are in play. Going back to Proposition 442 from a year ago to the EPA, the incentive policy for affordable housing and all the other funds that are in play. There is movement happening. As we speak, go out to the parking lot today, look across 66 and you'll see the Roars Project happening. You know, last time we were here, they were breaking ground. Now it's like really evident, huge housing project. Great incentive provided by this council to help see that materialize. And now the earth is, you can see the earth movement show for it. The soil and all the stuff that precedes the infrastructure that will then precede the arrival of houses that we so desperately need. It's important every now and then to actually not just focus on the things we talk about in this room, money and the policies, actually see what is happening, what you can see materially happening in the community, whether it's flood control projects, transportation projects, phase housing projects. There has got to be gratification in knowing that you, Council, were on the front end of this project, making some decisions, and now you're seeing it come into reality, it's come to fruition. My opinion, there's nothing more gratifying. We talked a lot about climate action and carbon neutrality, and there were great presentations on that. And this is similar comment. Not just the projects, it's the policies, it's the integration with all the other things we're doing in the community. Of course, the things that are more tangible, the electric charging stations, nice tour in the parking lots, the LED lights, the dark sky compliant lights, all those things are tangible. But there are a lot of things happening behind the scenes. Sustainability and resiliency and carbon neutrality are pillars underlying a lot of the policies that council considers. And we had some good presentations on that. Almost done. We're going to turn it over to council. Unreal that I can write that small. Ben, priority-based budgeting. Thank you Chris for the nice presentation yesterday and the continued discussion this morning about community priorities. We give this a lot of lip service. It's so much more than that. It is finding its way into our budget process. Five years ago, priority-based budgeting was a term we would talk about and everybody had made this confused look, like what exactly is that? The very first day I had full working day in the office was spent listening to somebody trying to explain priority-based budgeting to me. And it was clunky, man. I mean, it was, it's like, what are you talking about? That's what it was five years ago. We were just embarking upon this process. Fast forward five years, we all know about priority-based budgeting. The presentations you've had this retreat are similar to the other ones you had this year and are similar to the ones you had a year ago. And this progress has been building and building. This year is notable because we first oversaw this, but the survey went out to the community. So it's the second time that has occurred in this, along this evolution of priority-based budgeting, where we've checked in with the community. So it's just a wonderful place to be in now, where not only do we have the priorities, but we're double checking to make sure they're current. And as you heard yesterday and again today, we're making some revisions because it should be changing. Unity doesn't stop changing. The community is constantly in motion, constantly evolving. We need to keep lockstep with those changes and priority-based budgeting is all about that. And then to see it graphically, looking at the quartiles and where we are and how we're doing, you know, it's very telling. Good progress being made. And again, I think, just like my comments about seeing the residential development and seeing things happening in real time, is also gratifying to know that all of our discussions budgetarily are premised upon unity values that are real and are not just, you know, things we have surmised or formulated. These are results of a survey that went out. So good for us for having a budget system that is premised upon real-time community priorities. And we're working, we're serving our community in a very literal sense, in my opinion. I was a skeptic about priority-based budgeting, you know, I didn't know anything about it five years ago. I don't know that many of us did. Now with the benefit of hindsight, it's a wonderful tool. I don't know what we would be talking about without it because we would all be speculating on things like, we think this and we think that and I heard that you need to be considering this. No, no, no. It's much more science-based now. It's based on imperable data. It is based upon what our community is telling us their priorities are. And as representative elected officials of your community, that has to be gratifying. Last, there are two more things, real fast, revenues. Rick Tatter just and his team, they do a masterful job of talking about the projections. There are some good, there is some good news embedded and all that. But I want to circle back to this morning's discussion about new sources. That was a really good discussion as we talk about our enterprise funds. Utility rates, yes, they always factor into it, but it's not the end game. BBB, yeah, going in a good direction. Business attraction, you had some good snippets about what's happening in the world of economic vitality. How is that a revenue source? Well, of course it is because with the health of our business community comes more tax revenues that help fund many of these programs and policies and projects that we do. You know, it was really fun to talk about the Fourth of July festivities that are being planned. Funded entirely through BBB, which is paid by those who eat in our restaurants or stay in our lodges. First, visitors, us. So here you have a community investing in its tourism and all the things that BBB promotes. And then you have now a new event, not a new event, but a new event festivity, a display, if you will, to show for it. What a nexus to draw between all of that. You know, the investment coming back to the community. So there's a lot of good things that were discussed there, but new revenue sources, very important. And we're just talking about a few things there, but it's a long list. And then as we talk about some of the big projects that are not yet funded, but we know they're out there on the horizon, wastewater treatment plant comes to mind. It might not be the only one. There's a couple of large ones, but that one probably tops the list. Stay tuned. I don't know that it'll be us making the decisions about that plant replacement. But our successors will, most certainly. Some in the room will be here. But our successors will. It is so important that we do everything we can to allow for that conversation to occur what needs to occur with the resources at hand to make that project a reality. So when we talk about things like bond ratings and margins or allowances within our current property tax structure, both the tier one and tier two. And we talk about other funding mechanisms. And Rick mentioned quite a few of them. That's really important to keep in mind because there are projects that lie ahead where those resources will most likely come into play. And it's incumbent upon us right now, at this point in time, to make sure that we're allowing for those resources to be had when they need to be had. So just a little comment on that. Lastly, you just had the five-year outlook, which is very strong and healthy. And there you have it. I want to stop here. I intended to go through these themes of things that we have talked about. Maybe jog some thoughts that you may have about things you would like to have a little more discussion of, or again, things that we haven't talked about. A good stopping point for me to you, Council or staff, and say, what would you like to see further discussion of at this time? What are your thoughts?
So thank you for sending us the new personnel requests. This is really helpful in just kind of getting a general snapshot of what additional needs we have. And given, again, I want to acknowledge how hard the entire budget team works for a year to get us here and the many, many hard decisions that you have to make in order to put a budget in front of us that meets the needs of the city. We've talked about this a bit before, but especially in public works and in fire, there are so many positions, and I know we also have positions that are budgeted, but we haven't been able to fill. But these are two areas that we hear from the public a lot about. And so I'm just interested in keeping an eye on these two areas and at our earliest chance, jumping on the opportunity to fill some of these positions. I just, these are so critical to the operations of the city. And I worry about staff in both, I worry about staff in all areas, but especially these two areas, being overly stressed and just what that does to staffing. So I do appreciate this list and I would love, I'd love additional conversation as we move forward about these positions. And I don't know how the rest of the council feels. And this isn't what I want to do. And do not jump on me when I say this. But I'm wondering whether we want to have a conversation about property tax and how perhaps we could use it to fund a position or two off of this list.
Yeah, I'm going to dissect a little bit what I just heard you comment on, and thank you. The first part being the importance of public safety from a fire and police standpoint. And I know we still have Chief Musselman in the room. I think Chief Keeler may have had to step out. I know that they are both probably wanting to hear those comments from you, so thank you for that. I also know a year ago or two years ago, budget team where we looked at funding a number of new employees with the Fire Department for tie-in, was that? I, that right? I see heads nodding. Was that two years ago or last year? Nine positions is what I recall. Years ago, yeah. Not at all to suggest that we did this two years ago. It is to suggest it has been a focal point of ours. The positions just aren't being funded, the new positions aren't being funded this year. It's very important to us. I think public safety, of course, rises to the top of the list. public safety, of course, rises to the top of the list. As to the second part of your comment on property tax, I would, nobody would ever jump on anything that you would suggest, Mayor. I think everything's fair game for discussion. When you tie a tax increase to additional staffing, that's a hard one. That's a hard one to sell. It's a little bit easier if you're talking about a ladder truck, a new fire station, or something. But when you're talking about more staff, it doesn't make for good headlines when it's all about new staffing. That's just a general comment. But I'd love to hear more discussion on it. But I appreciate your comments on the importance of public safety.
And we haven't wanted to have a conversation about the tax because, of course, we don't. And now, given water rates, stormwater rates, everything else, it's a really sensitive topic. But I like for nothing to be off the table in terms of conversation.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. We have to tell the public, we're going to increase staffing in general. I think we might not get much support for that. But I think we'd get more support if they understand it's for public safety for police and fire. That's an area where, what really expects us to step up to it and do whatever needs to be done so that there's no shortfalls there. As far as the taxes, it might make sense to increase the tax to keep up with inflation. Because if we do nothing, in effect, it's lowering adjusted for inflation. Oh, I'll leave it at that. So I'm basically agreeing with the mayor, time that I can remember.
Oh, come on. Come on now.
I'm just kidding. Pulling your leg. We're having too much fun here. We're having fun, but this is serious business and I understand that.
Just to, I don't know about property taxes, but I think one of my big shock analysis was that we have, you know, firemen, whatever their job is, and we're paying them, you know, eighteen dollars an hour. You can get burned flipping burgers. I've done it. But they're a little higher risk and I just don't, you know, I think there should be a hazardous pay factor in there that our first responders, which can contribute to our, any vacancies or it's not in the game when it's trying to make its pay, when that's all they're getting paid. So there are some components to our classifications and pays that I'd like to see us maybe reevaluating. Again, I know we are a council manager or city government, so I do respect that. Don't want to get in the weeds too much. But I also would like to at least have the conversation raised to feel that we're having the conversation and we're considering it.
And even under the council manager form of government, and I have often stated this, it's the budget process where there's an interplay between policy and administration that's pretty indisputable. There is no clear separation and this might be the one example where there's a lot of integration. So your comments are, everything's fair game here. Jen Caputo, I'm looking your way, you know, with the current market analyses, did we have fire or police as, we had some members of those currently being looked at from a market standpoint, compensation-wise? Comments well stated and well received. So certainly will look at that. You know, it's, I don't want to get off on a tangent, but it's one of the issues that we have to wrestle with every now and then when, as we talk about minimum wage and the impact we're seeing organizationally, especially in the lower pay ranges, to try to stay competitive or even ahead of what minimum wage dictates. And it's, it's what the voters approved. I agree with all the statements that Rick Tatter shared earlier. But I think if I could characterize the one aspect of the minimum wage ordinance that presents the biggest challenge to us is that is the yearly inflationary escalator that happens. And, you know, a couple of years ago, we had really high inflation in the end of the summer when that escalator was calculated. Chris Brody remembers this. And we saw a minimum wage January 1st of that next year, jump up. And, you know, and here we are now, again, 2024, seeing pretty high inflation. Don't know what's going to happen in August. But right now, things are, you know, inflation is still a factor. Every, you know, so what that means is minimum wage could be impacted again in an upward way. Bringing it back to this discussion, you know, how do we deal with that? And I wish there was an easy answer. We hear you loud and clear on public safety. Chief Musselman, anything you want to add to this discussion as it pertains to law enforcement? I know we don't have Mark Gaylor here, but we'd love to have your thoughts.
It's a challenging topic. The one question you posed, we do have members within our ranks that are looking at a reclass this, a market increase. Positions that have fallen out of the market at the upper end of the scale, but I haven't seen what that looks like. As far as officers, we're right about the national average of number of officers per thousand population, based on our population and our authorized staffing. Our challenge is still, much like everyone else, finding people, hiring them, and then them being able to live here. Even the police chief had, is coming in, had some houses fall out of escrow because the competition is so much for so, such limited stock out there. So I think even if you gave me more positions, I might not be able to fill. And we're not doing bad now. Officer, I've got nine vacancies, which isn't bad. Dispatch, I've got about seven. But we've done better in dispatch in that we've reached out to previous employees that are working part-time for us as needed, filling those gaps. And the officers is just kind of an up and down thing. But we, the pay increases we have had over the last couple years have helped people here. And then the legislature just passed a new law. So if you, another agency takes one of our officers or another agency takes an officer for anywhere in the state, they have to repay a portion of the training costs. So we had two officers move to Chandler for personal readings reasons, and we're going to get some reimbursement to help us for providing that training.
Is that going to keep your contracts in place, that required officers to do that if they left within a certain number of years?
It's, we are going to keep those contracts in place in case the officers leave for other reasons. But if they get snatched up by another agency, the agency has to pay. And if the agency doesn't pay, it defaults the office. Either way, we're trying to reimburse money for the gentleman.
Chief?
Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Just remember, Sweet had her hand up.
Please.
Taylor on the phone?
I don't think so. I think he was in. I checked it earlier. Let me look again.
Yeah, it looks like he is online.
He is now? Okay.
Chief Gaylor, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear. I apologize. I ran into a signal issue. So can you hear me?
Yes.
But Chief, similar question. We have a few unfunded positions here. And I'm wondering what that looks like for the fire department this year, next year, and impacts that having.
Well, we are beginning for the first time to see an emerging trend of loss of firefighters to other locations, more so than we've experienced in the past. Much of the requests that we do not see funded have to do with providing the type of support we need to provide to support programs and take some of the load off of the line staff. An EMS position, a inspection division where we've had to pull inspections off of responding companies because of the high volume of inspections they're conducting, excuse me, the high volume of calls they're conducting, traditionally relying on on-duty staffing. We need to begin to put more inspectors on the street. We still haven't put the number of inspectors in place that were in place prior to the Great Recession. So much of what we're trying to do is position ourselves for what we think, what we know is going to be the need to promote 22 bodies into leadership positions in the next few years. And so we're trying to increase and improve our ability to provide professional development and training. So those are the types of shortfalls and struggles we have as we try to grow and put things in place in this environment, in this economic environment that we have. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah. Mayor, my comments are similar to what all have expressed. And I just, having this list in front of me helps me to understand the big picture. And that's just what I'm trying to do for going into budget season next year, which seems like that will be tomorrow. Sorry. It's good to start thinking about this big picture because, you know, to me, fire, police, roads, water, these are all things that are just crucial. And that's why we're here, is to make sure that is working for the community. So I appreciate the time that you spent on this. I can't believe the amount of work that goes into budget season. And I think this sets us up for a good conversation starting for the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, all your comments here are listening closely to everything. What else is on your mind, Council?
Say that I think it's a miracle that you've been able to give raises and hold health insurance steady and do all of the other things that you all are doing and presenting us with this budget. It's remarkable, just like it is every year. It's just remarkable.
Well, thank you. The team wrestles hard with this. Starts in about November. And, you know, going full tilt last few months. You know, I guess I'm always trying to write a hint of optimism to what's a very serious discussion that a year ago, two years ago, we had a lot more ability to fill new positions. We'll get back to that place. It's just not this year. But what is happening this year, and you just noted it, Mayor, and thank you, is investing in the employees that we do have, trying to slow the attrition and make people feel better about what they're doing because we know how hard everybody is working. Vacancy rates, we really need to make some progress on filling those spots.
Sorry, Councilmember, I'm talking about, I serve on the BPAC Commission and they were doing their budget. I don't know if you recall, we were talking about this city lawn out front, kind of reviewing it, sustainable viewpoint. And I know that the Rio de Flag project's happening. When BPAC was talking about the lawn, I said, well, why is that sooner in, and they said they aren't hearing from council that we want, they have the money for it. It's just we're not expressing that we want that to go forward. And I know it has to balance with the Rio de. I just want to throw that out there. But if we are interested in looking at that, and I know a lot of other divisions would have to get involved, it's not as easy as we would think it would be.
Heidi's making her way up here. Rebecca, feel free to jump in as well. I'm not close to this issue. I know exactly what you're talking about. We have a little bit of zero escape in the front there. But any thought that you have would be appreciated.
Mayor, Councilmember Sweet, I'm going to be really honest with you. I didn't catch every single thing you said. That's why I got up. I just heard you say BPAC. So Rebecca?
I'll try and talk a little bit louder. We have the City Hall lawn. And a couple of years ago, during a budget retreat, council was talking about wanting to look at how we're doing the lawn, add more zero escape, make it more sustainable. It didn't happen. It's on the BPAC's budget for, I think, a year or two years from now. For that to move forward, they need to hear from us that we are still interested in having that project happen. There's also the Rio de Flag project that is kind of, we want to balance it with when that is going as well. So I just want to throw it out there. In the budget, if we're still interested, we should start speaking up.
Yeah, I'm going to let Rebecca go. And then if I have anything else to add.
Thank you.
So, Prose meets quarterly with Jana and David and Kristen. We just talked about the same thing. I think everybody's on board for that change to happen. It really is just a matter of the construction projects that are in the area. The downtown mile is also going to have effect on this area. You've got Rio de Flag. All of those are happening soon. And there's no reason to go in and do anything now and then rip it out or have it. And we don't have all of those designs at ninety percent or a hundred percent yet. I think once we have that and we know like where the impacts are going to be, then we could start designing a project on that that meets very many goals. So this is sustainability. It's prose from a maintenance lens. If BPAC has, of course, the art in mind and beautification. So we're all on board. And it's going to happen. It just, it needs to happen in the right order.
I agree with all of that. Jana had mentioned that she wanted to hear from council if we were still interested in that being.
I'm hearing.
I'm still very interested. And I remember from our previous conversation, one of the points that we made was that we want it designed in a way that still allows for, you know, groups to come.
Make engagement.
Yes. But designing with pollinators and getting rid of some grass, and maybe some art. Thank you.
So Councilmember Sweet, all we have to do now is I send a note to Jana to say that it looks like council's still interested. And then when you're in your BPAC retreat, when you get more information from Nicole, then they can, they can change out how they're programming. So they can take one thing that might look like it's going to go a little bit longer and move that into its place. And then they can do that as a commission.
The answer is always in the room. Thank you all for that. Councilmember Sweet. What else is on your mind? And Council, bear in mind, in the weeks ahead, coming your way with, is it a resolution to adopt the ordinance, Rick? Ordinance? Resolution. Okay, and while Brandy's making her way up, my, where I was going with this is, you know, this is probably the last retreat format we have to talk about the budget things. It's not like we're yet at adoption phase, but it's coming close. Brandy?
So we will have candidate budget adoption, which will set our maximum appropriation June 4th. And we'll have a public hearing on the property taxes and the budget and the final budget adoption on June 18th, in the first read of our property tax ordinance. And then we'll have our second read and adoption of our property taxes on, by. by second.
Second.
And then what happens after July 2nd?
We implement.
That's where I was going with it.
Because we're spending money. All these amazing things.
So, Brandy, do we send you all of our changes we want to make to the budget directly to you? I just wanted to see you turn white.
Send them to Brandy. I would say you have several more weeks before you have to do that.
So does council have no interest in changing the property rate tax to account for inflation? Aaron, I talked about it, but we really didn't. If there's no interest, fine, they should just tell us. You'd like to know now, I presume?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So other council members?
If we just do that with the geobond or that was secondary tax rate or primary? Is it going to increase?
And it's within it's it's within what we have available. So it does not raise the tax rate. Like for the the housing bond?
That is correct. So our secondary property tax rate will stay flat at point eight hundred dollars of assessed valuation. That is the plan. But yeah, this, and that's what we've kind of included in all of our, you know, trying to maintain that flat tax rate for all of the issues that we've gotten approval from the voters to date. We do have capacity to raise our primary property tax about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If that is something council's interested, the sooner the better because there are a lot of truth in taxation notices that we need to ensure work.
So consider that increase, every tax increase on the primary, that would increase impact the bottom line to our property owners.
But each property owner will be impacted differently depending on the changes in their assessment.
Not interested.
I might go back to my earlier comments. Think when we talk about adjustments, there needs to be a very tangible and project that where there's widespread support for public safety, you know, and being a good example of that, but not staff, but projects. And I know we'll have project, projects in the future where this becomes a more relevant discussion. I'm not aware in my past of adjustments being made just to try to keep up with inflation. So I can't speak with experience on I just think it's going to be a hard thing to explain to the to our ratepayers.
Well, I don't hear council members jumping up and saying they want to do it. So I think that's the end of that decision. You have one more thing for you.
You got a napkin?
Yeah, I got it. I'm tired of talking. I'll let you read it.
This is good.
Well, that's for the whole group. Read it.
No, these are both for Rebecca. Sign mine.
Why don't you go to read my, my note?
Yeah, it says good meeting. And my signature, Rebecca, these are for you. Other thoughts, Council? Since you just heard from Brandy with the next steps, we feel we're ready for the next steps. Are we, are we good?
Yes. So I don't have much to say. I, I hope you took note of the things I mentioned today, today and yesterday. For example, the additional sled funding would be helpful. I brought up as a fair, I think, several weeks ago, the idea of council having a conversation around funding the Flagstaff Community Band through if discretionary call that, or any council initiative, council initiative, council initiative fund. I'm on the board of that organization, so I'm happy to recuse myself from the conversation. I don't know if this is an appropriate time to go ahead and have that and save it off the agenda in the future. But you're
I think it's a good time right now, if, if council's agreeable, Mayor. Do you know how much we have left for this? Yes.
Five thousand?
Five thousand.
I don't know if if I should be a part of that conversation or not, other than bringing it up. Maybe even just for the, even if it's not necessary, I can get back from it. And are we at the point where if we don't spend those monies?
We don't roll, not yet.
Talk about this. I apologize for not remembering, but they roll over.
They do not. We talked about making that a policy in the future, but currently they do not. June 30th is the last day of this fiscal year, and those funds would date all over. They roll back into the general fund, but they, they wouldn't be used in the council. Now, there would be appropriation for next year. Is there a desire by council to talk about, you called it the community?
Flagstaff Community Band.
Say possible recipient for some of the remaining council initiative this fiscal year.
Kristen, what would the money be used for?
Well, I can't speak to that specifically. The, the it's, they work on a shoestring. The community band is made up of community residents, lots of retirees, our, our, our previous police chief is one of the pompadours on, on the community band, I believe, if I remember correctly. Lots of folks around town, and one of the neat things about it is high school students and younger musicians can participate as well. It's, it's open to everybody. They provide concerts on holidays all over town. You do things that Heritage Square a lot, so there's a lot of coordination with Downtown Business Alliance and building up that space. It's just one of those communities that Flagstaff has, and it's constantly in need of, you know, extra funding. So I thought I'd bring it up. Really personally attached to the response at all, so don't feel bad either way. But if we have some monies left over from what we've already spent it on Lowell Observatory and Fire Therapy Amenities. I don't know what else we've.
Poet?
Poet, lover. Thank you, yes.
A little bit last summer, I recall, on the movies in the square.
I'm trying not to say too much because I don't, you know, I don't know if there's indiscretion there or not.
Mind me, are we doing movies this summer?
We hadn't, we hadn't discussed it. I'm wondering because I, I like if we could sponsor a concert at Heritage Square or even a concert as part of Movies on the Square, because it's nice for council to sponsor things that, that are free to the public, I think. So if there's some way for for that to be a thing, that was the fun thing about Movies on the Square is that we get to sponsor these movies for.
Vice Mayor, is that something that's?
Yes, I think that might be a very appropriate way to move forward, and, you know, the, the current fundraising effort underway by our board has different tiers at which you can contribute and different outcomes and sponsorship of one of the evenings at Heritage Square this summer, maybe even over Fourth of July, something like that. Sounds appropriate and sounds like a, a nice way to frame things.
Yeah. Is there a website?
Absolutely.
Um, why don't we do this? Stacy, looking your way, why don't we queue this up for council action in, in the near future? We will put together information from the website. And with the idea that maybe we'll go to a concert in Heritage Square sometime with council being the sponsor.
Okay. Can you state how much we have left of?
I think about five thousand. Thank you for raising that wonderful idea. Other thoughts? I know we're winding down. It's Friday. It's 1:30. I just don't want to truncate the discussion. If there's something in your mind that you want to talk about, let's put it out there. Otherwise, we'll get ready to have public comment and adjourn. Sounds like we might be there. We have public comment coming up. Mayor, can we go ahead and open this up for a comment at this time?
Yes, let's.
Is there any public comment? Steve? Now, at three minutes, Stacy's going to do jumping jacks. Okay with you, Mayor?
For her to do jumping jacks? Sure.
Yes, at three minutes.
So I want to follow up on a question Greg asked me earlier today. And that is regarding the COVID on 180 and the flood protection that's going to provide my street, which is west of Onaway. I can tell you that the street is very excited for that project to be completed. Glad to see the work happening. There's about five homes that I'm going to say are on the southern side of the street, which is the low side of our street, which still have their sandbags in place. The rest of us on the north side have taken them down. We also built a wall behind us, but we're feeling pretty comfortable that's going to happen. So we are very appreciative and thank the council and, and staff for getting that done. So pass that along. So I don't know if you, you saw, but either late yesterday or early this morning, the CDC came out and they announced the births for the year for the country for 2023. Now, if we go back to that handout I gave you, because it's births, deaths, immigration, determined population growth. And just to remind you, on the national scene, births were supposed to go up to 2032. Millennials are a little bigger, and they're bringing kids on board supposedly. Well, that didn't happen. We went down. Our burst in 2023 is 1% lower than what the Census Bureau thought it would be for 2023. And if you look on their schedule, it's where the Census Bureau thought we'd be in 2040, 2040. This is dropping 2% a year again. It dropped 2% from 15 to 2000, I think, in 2000, 2001. It went up 1%. It's been dropping 2% a year ever since. Those are the number of person in the country, okay? It's not what's in the Census Bureau's numbers, i.e., it looks like it, we could go to zero population sooner as a country. Impacts on, on Flagstaff, we'll have to ask the demographers locally who gave us that information and see how they respond. But I just wanted to share, share that with you. And just to kind of wrap up, I've been asked to hand out the information to the other councilwomen who weren't here yesterday, so I told them I would do that. And I, I did share it with Carol from Stan Tech. And I said, you know, she has to hear it from you or Greg or, you know, or Shannon to do anything with it. I just want to give her a heads up professionally. This might be coming your way, might not, you know. Be, be great to, if she could run that quickly. So here's the quick, key financials. I went over the population with you yesterday. And what that means on the top of this page is, is growth, and that growth is not population. That growth is is account growth. So.
Does Stacy need to do?
Well.
I, I get, I get credit for complimenting the community on, on, on this.
Yes, thank you.
So what, what you see there, it says 1% annually, what I wrote in, is what the local demographers and the state believes the population growth is going to be and, and up to 2040, and that's 0.75%. And Flagstaff currently has 2.4 residents, individuals per resident. So this is account growth. So if that means a, an apartment complex or a house, okay? So if you drive that by two by four, annual increase is only going to be 0.31% to 2040, that's flat. If, if the Census Bureau doesn't change their numbers and the demographers from Northern Arizona don't change their numbers. And then the other two numbers I, I wrote down there as far as the escalators to go to 2.4, down from 4%. And what this all does and aims towards is how big are you going to build that waste treatment? And how much do you need to increase your rates to cover this? And I've been sharing this with a number of people in the community, a number of people who've done, been in some businesses that you know quite well in this, in this community. And one of the individuals pointed out and said, Steve, don't forget to remind them this isn't set in stone. Like all forecasts, I guarantee it's going to be wrong. I just don't know which way and put in the magnitude. But in two or three years, you can adjust it. You can raise rates some more, or you can say, hey, we don't even need some, some of this stuff. So just keep, keep in mind, I think it's important if, if Carol could rerun those numbers and give you an idea what the implication is and work with Shannon with regards to what the implication is for lower population growth and the need for, for the waste plant down the road. And and so I, I think that would be helpful for you, and I think community members would be appreciative of that. And if you had any questions about anything I said, I'd be glad to take them. See, we didn't have time yesterday.
Steve, I don't have Carol's email, only you do. So if you want to share that with me, I'd love to communicate directly with her.
It's a public on, on, on the website, and that's where I got it for where she works, and I'll be glad to share it with you.
Thank you. That's appreciated. Two quick things. Then we'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for adjournment. First, I'd like us all to extend our appreciation to our facilitator and pastor, Jeff Kennedy. I'll offer you just a second, the final words of wisdom that you'd like to share with us. Secondly, I'm wondering, you know, it's late on a Friday, everybody just had lunch. I ask all the staff, Council, you get to stay seated. I ask all the staff to just stand up for a second. Now, so why don't you join me in recognizing the hard work of staff? Thank you all. You deserve that. Jeff, you want to close this out, and then Mayor, back to you. Thank you.
All right, we, we did really well. It's 18 minutes till two Friday. Want to thank everyone for what you did. We got one last thing that I want to do. We started this morning. I ask you what inspires you, and it gave answers from your life, your, your small teams and your large teams. And we captured those words up on the, on the board. So council and, and Mayor, and Mayor Daggett, starting with you, you would pick out one thing, and I just, and then Vice Mayor Aslan, and then the rest of the council, Councilwoman Matthews, McCarthy and Sweet, pick out one thing on that board that really stands out to you and just, it, it come together one purpose, meet goals, push each other, does good work, difficult work for betterment of others, excitement to learn from Flag, meeting challenges, coming out better. Couple of them that stick out to me, helping others transform. These were all your words. These were your words of inspiration. So if the mayor, vice mayor and council could pick out one thing each, and then Vice Mayor Aslan, I'm going to ask you to capture those five things into a single sentence for us. Okay?
That makes it more interesting to pick out some.
Yeah.
I figured we'd have some clever that. And, and if you would just circle, circle your thing for me, whatever it is, okay?
Hey, can you see that one? That one's open and transparent. You get to pick one, too.
Could it be Urbana?
Yes.
Picking it out of others.
This was supposed to be really quick, just seeing.
Greg, do you think we could fit new dry erase markers into budget?
By the facilities team.
Oh, Karen says she can't see what's being.
Tell her I texted her a picture.
Oh. You're getting a text of what the, um, board looks like, Councilmember House.
Yes, we didn't want to leave you out. Difficult work for the betterment.
Trying to pick one that you can use in the sentence and not.
Difficult work for the betterment of others.
All on that way down.
We have four or five, right? We have five up there? Okay, we're just waiting for Councilmember House.
Okay, you got the picture.
You got the picture? Okay. So while, while we're waiting for Councilmember House, I, I just want to share this with you. So, uh, in this whole team concept, who's ever heard, and I might've shared this with you before. If I have, just pretend like I haven't. How many of you have heard the term, there's no I in team? Go hands. Everybody's heard that, right? All right, well, believe it if you want to. So here's, here's the rest of that. All right, there is no I in team, but it still requires individual excellence to achieve team success. And so I am inspired by your individual excellence and it explains why the team is so successful.
That what Councilmember House said? Oh, you're typing what we've circled.
Oh, okay. All right, like I said, this was intended to be clear.
Inspired by staff. I'm inspired by all of your visions.
Can't make up new stuff.
Okay, inspired. Thank you, Councilmember House. All right, so now Vice Mayor Aslan, you've got a minute or less. Work, you're done? All right, share with us and then we'll get out of here. This, this will be now our closing mantra. You get to take this with you. What have you got?
Did you use AI?
No, he was. That's a dangerous thing. All right, let's have it. Right or tip. Through the open and transparent teamwork and the hard work of staff, Team Flagstaff stands up for what's right and does the difficult work for the betterment of others.
There you go.
That was awesome. Will you repeat that and then text it to me, please? Or, or you can email it. One more time. For the o, open and transparent, open and transparent teamwork and the hard work of staff, Team Flagstaff stands up for what's right and does the difficult work for the betterment of others. Fantastic. And team, those were captured from your words.
That's our mantra. I like it.
Thank you so much. God bless you all.
I almost just got up and walked out.
That's how you came in. Adjourning us, that would be, that would be cruel.
You have to stay here.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.